All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 7th meeting of the Jersey City Planning Board. If we could please come to order and join me in a salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the Republic. All right, thank you, everybody. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please, Cam?
Yes, sir. Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 7th, 2023. This is the Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled 5:30 PM start time. This planning board meeting is being held virtually as a real conference that is open to the public. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting is given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, the Jersey City Reporter, and posted with the city clerk on March 3rd, 2023. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage, and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public.
All right, thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chair, Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Cruz.
Here.
Commissioner Lipsky. Commissioner Lipsky.
He was having problems a little while ago with his audio.
Okay, we'll come back to Commissioner Lipsky. Commissioner Torres. Chairman Langston.
Here.
Okay, we have four commissioners present. We know that Commissioner Lipsky is here.
Here.
Okay, there we go. We have five commissioners present. We have a quorum.
Excellent, thank you. Could we swear in the staff, please, Mike? I see Tim, Cameron, Matt, and Liz. Do you guys swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Cam, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, we do. Okay, so I'll start with the adjournments to March 14th, a special meeting that we're going to be having. So all of the items on our agenda that are listed A through M under item six on the agenda, adjournments. They are being adjourned to a special meeting on March 14th with preservation of notice. So that is Tuesday next week. The adjournments will be carried with preservation of notice. And we have one additional item to add to that agenda. And that is item 26 on the agenda, which is case number P23-023. And that is address 125 Christopher Columbus Drive, carrying to March 14th with preservation of notice. So the adjournments on tonight's agenda are being carried to March 14th. Those are items A through M. And then item 26 is also carried to March 14th. Now, in addition, we have three items on tonight's agenda that are requesting to carry to March 21st, our next regularly scheduled meeting. And those items are the following. For that, that would be item 18 on the agenda, address is 145 Industrial Drive. There are preliminary and final major site plan with C variances requesting to carry to March 21st with preservation of notice.
And Cam, that case number is P22-159, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And next we have item 22, case number P23-014. Address is for 78 Bishop Street. And they are carrying to March 21st as well with preservation of notice. Next, there's item 23 on the agenda. And that is case P22-148. Address is 626 Summit Avenue. And they will be carrying to March 21st in the year 2023 with preservation of notice. So again, item 18, item 22, and item 23 carrying to March 21st with preservation of notice.
Great, thank you, Cam. Appreciate it. All right, let's get right into new business then. We'll call item nine. Is case P22-145 is a preliminary and final major subdivision for 417 Communal Ave. and 139 Woodward Street?
All right, I'm promoting Ron. Is Laura Venon part of the presentation? Okay.
That is wrong.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Ronald Chaujin. I'm with the firm of Schuman-Hallin. And I represent the applicant in this application, which is the subdivision application, as well as the site plan application, which immediately follows this application. For purposes of some background, the 417 Communal Oz is the contract purchaser and the designated redeveloper of the former Steel Tech Plant located at 417 Communal Avenue and 139 Woodward Street. This is a notice case, and Mr. Alampi, we have provided notice to the paper as well as certified mailing on this application, as well as the second application.
So Chairman, I, I think it's probably best that we call both cases, case number nine and case number 10, because they go hand in hand. The first case being the subdivision, the second case being the preliminary and final major site plan application. So why don't we call both cases? And then we will mark the notices for purposes of the record.
Agreed. Okay, counsel, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and obviously we'll take separate votes on both case numbers. So we're also going to call case P22-146 is the preliminary and final major site plan for variances for the same address, 417 Communal Ave. and 139 Woodward Street.
So Chairman, I am in receipt of the affidavit of publication, proof of mailing with respect to case P22-145, as well as case P22-146. We're going to mark those as A1 for the record. So A1 for the record are the notices on P22-145 and P22-146.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Alampi. I'd like to proceed with the subdivision case at this time. And my first witness is Matt Nules of Dresner-Robin. Mr. Nules?
And I'll swear in, Matt, and just if you can remember to keep your voice up, you guys are a little tough to hear. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, my name is Matthew Nules. My last name is N-E-U-L-S.
Thank you. Mr. Nules, good evening. Pleasure to see you. We've qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Bring up the subdivision plot, Mr. Nules. Thank you. Mr. Nules, would you tell us a little bit about the site before and after the proposed subdivision?
Sure, so just to touch base on the, the drawings on the screen right now is a copy of the subdivision plot that's been submitted. And the only, the only difference being that I've had color to shade the different lots, the different proposed lots. So just wanted to point that out here in the early part of the testimony. But to answer your question, Mr. Chaujin, the property today consists of really two lots. So the whole outline of the area that I'm kind of tracing along here is the overall property. But it consists of two lots. The one on the left, this line right here really divides the two properties. They can still like that. So, so what we're proposing here is to is to create four lots out of, out of the overall two lots for different purposes of the redevelopment here at 417 Communal Ave. The property has some frontage along the five avenue where I'm putting here on the right side of the sheet. Also has several hundred feet of frontage along Woodward here on the bottom part of the sheet, and then on the left here borders Berry Lane Park on the left side of the sheet. So I can go right into the, to the proposed subdivision. The lot here on the, on the upper, upper right-hand side is proposed lot 23.02. Yes. Zoom in a little bit. And there we go. There we go. See things. Here we go. Proposed lot 23.02, roughly 0.44 acres in area, and this lot is, is going to contain the retail area of the site, which will be explained during further testimony regarding the site plan. But that's the purpose of that, that lot. Moving to the a little bit. The middle part of the lot, the largest portion here in blue shading is lot 23.01. And that's going to contain a large portion of development, as well as some of the outdoor public plaza space and other space. Again, testimonial following the site plan to explain all these different components. That's the large part of the site containing the major part of the development, 2.14 acres, lot 23.01. Moving over to the right, proposed lot 23.03. That contains the existing Steel Tech headhouse. And again, there'll be some testimony on, on what happens. That'll be retained here in the screen lot. Lot 23.03, zero, it's only a tenth of an acre, 0.10 acres. And then going down to the bottom and left side of the subdivision, we have proposed lot 29.01. And this is, this is containing a proposed community center, then part of the redevelopment plan. And the reason why it's being subdivided, as well as a forty space parking lot, again, will be described further in the site plan. But that was the reason for this yellow shaded lot here along Woodward Street, and then running along the adjacent park from the left side of the site. That's a brief overview of the subdivision itself.
Now, Mr. Nules, there are certain easements that are generated that we are requesting for the rec center and the parking lot, is that clear?
That's correct. We can go over those. Those are, those are showing what the spots hatching here on the plan. So this easement here, this larger sort of rectangular piece, and then he's extending down to Woodward Street is for the purpose of circulation. There'll be, there'll be a need to bring vehicles into the building. Trucks and vehicles down here, again, the access will be shown more on the site plan testimony. But this, this allows use of that common access lot for those trucks and for the vehicles access in the parking lot in that area. And then there's another piece of the easement here running vertically on the page along the property line. And that's a five-foot wide easement line, which was a recommendation of the city a couple of months ago, but basically keeping space clear, which will allow for the provision of windows in the building. In compliance with building, building department regulations that we establish an easement to keep that space clear. And make sure we can have windows among those walls.
Now, Mr. Nules, the, this subdivision will help the redevelop or effectuate the terms of the redevelopment agreement with concern, which concerns community benefits.
Correct, that's correct. It does so in a few ways. Number one, establishing this yellow lot for the, for the, the community center and also the parking lot associated with that center, which is required element. As well as the red lot for the, for the retail component up here in the upper right corner. And, and as well as maintaining that the Steel Tech Head House in green.
Okay, now, is there any proposed public access shown on this plan? If not, it'll be on the site plan.
It will be shown on the site plan. Yeah, that'll run roughly in this area what I'm showing, but, but it'll be depicted on the site plans, landscape plans, and architectural buildings as well.
Now, did we receive any comments from any review agents concerning the subdivision?
Did we receive comments from, from planning staff? Matt Ward. The subdivision was issued on February 3rd. And there was a two-page memorandum from that ward regarding the subdivision specifically.
And is the applicant prepared to address those issues if the subdivision is planned?
Yes, it is so. I think we received an email comment from City Engineering as well, and would be prepared to address them as well. That was just an email, not a letter. And the other thing, if I remember correctly, is that we will address the needs and bounds description. Because I think one of the review agencies raised that question. That's right, that was raised by City Engineering, and we'll provide needs and bounds descriptions for each lots, as well as each of the lots shown, as well as the overall outbound of the subdivision, as well as the easements. Yes, sir.
I don't have any further questions of Mr. Nules on the subdivision portion of the application at this time.
All right, thank you, counsel. Yeah, I have no questions on the subdivision. Anybody else?
No.
No.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nules. We appreciate it.
Yeah. I have nothing further at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Um, do you want to present your site plan concurrently, counsel?
Unless the board wants to vote now on this, and then we'll move to the site plan. I'll leave that up to Mr. Alampi.
Chair, that's up to, to yourself and the board. Obviously, the site plan application is the meat and potatoes. The subdivision is very self-explanatory. You know, it's, it's two lots into four lots, the reasoning for it. So if you want to take the vote now, I'm perfectly okay with that. If you want to hold off until you hear the site plan, I'm okay with that as well.
Yeah, I'd like to move into site plan if we could while we're, while we're open, and we have a nice line of communication here. So yeah, let's, let's continue on with site plan and as I said earlier, obviously, we'll, we'll take separate votes on these.
As, as I mentioned in my earlier remarks, the redevelopers and the JCRE entered into a redevelopment agreement in November of 2022. And what you will see before you tonight complies with the redevelopment plan. It meets the community benefits requirement of the redevelopment plan. It meets the the design requirements, and it also addresses many of the comments and the discussions that the redeveloper and the professionals have had with the city over the past three years, as a matter of fact. We would like to start with Dean Marchetto as our first witness.
And I see Dean, and I'll just swear him in. As soon as he unmutes. Hello, Dean, how are you?
Well, thank you.
And I'll swear in. If you can raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And if you could just state and spell your name, please?
Yes, my name is Dean Marchetto. That's D-E-A-N. Marchetto, M-A-R-C-H-E-T-T-O.
Thank you. Mr. Marchetto, good evening. We've qualified you both as a planner and an architect in the past. Are you testifying only as an architect tonight, or?
Tonight, I'm testifying as both, planner and architect.
Okay, so are both of those licenses current?
Yes, they are.
Okay, great. So you're qualified as an architect and a planner, and take it away.
Okay, I'm going to share my screen.
Mr. Marchetto, would you please provide us with an overview of the project? As I understand, someone else in your office is also going to testify.
Yes, I'll speak to that. Let me just get my screen up. Are you able to see this white screen with label?
We are, yes.
Excellent. Okay, good evening, board members and commissioners and Chairman Langston. We're very excited tonight to present a very special plan that has several components to it. This, this, this plan has five components that include four buildings and, and an open space component. And therefore, this overall site planning of this project is an element in itself. I will be presenting the site plan and, and site plan strategy en masse. Juan Rodriguez, my associate, will be presenting the architectural design. Sybil will be Matt Nules, and Lauren Venon will be presenting the landscape aspects. So Mr. Marchetto, if I could just chime in momentarily for some, some general ground rules, so we don't overlap and interrupt one another. Obviously, this is some kind of slideshow presentation. I don't know how many slides it is, and if there are slides in the slideshow that are not in the board packet. So if there are, I would suggest we mark the entire slideshow as an exhibit A2, and then submit that. So between yourself and counsel, I'll leave that to you fine gentleman. My second general comment is for everyone's benefit, obviously, prior to this application, this matter was subject of an amendment to the redevelopment plan many, many months ago. That turned into a litigation by a interested party that was objecting to the amendment to the redevelopment plan. Obviously, that has since resolved itself, and hence you are here with the site plan application. My point in making that comment is twofold. One, for the history of what it's worth. And two, because obviously, that site or that redevelopment plan amendment led to this being a primarily conforming site plan application. So we don't need to go too far into the weeds, because the board is very familiar with with the site. So I just want you to bear that in mind, you and the other professionals and counsel when he gives his two and a half hour summation. Okay. Understood, Mr. Alampi. However, the, the site plan aspect of this project is very important, and I'll be brief, but I need to put it on the record. I have a 21-slide exhibit, and we call it exhibit A2, if you like. And if, if, if you permit so, I'll be ready to proceed. Very good, thank you. A2 is the 21-slide PowerPoint. Thank you. This is the first slide. You can see here an overall map of the Bergen Lafayette neighborhood. The, the site is, is marked here by, bound on the south by 78 and Liberty Science Center. You see there are two light rail stations in proximate to the site. This is the one down here, Liberty State Park Light Rail and Garfield Avenue. You'll also notice up in the top left here, this is a white square with a red perimeter. That is the site area. And Berry Lane Park is located on the left adjacent to the site, and the site is located on Communal Ave. So this is more of a close-up. Of that, you see the project site is 3.77 acres, almost four acres. It occupies the former Steel Tech fabrication building that was here, and most of it has been removed. You'll see here Liberty Berry Lane Park on the left and Lafayette Park, which is the center of that neighborhood and Bergen Lafayette on the right. An aerial view of the site area shows on the bottom left, this is the project site. Communal Ave is in the foreground. And you'll see that there's one existing building that will remain. That's the Steel Tech Head House, where my cursor is. You'll also see in the distance the relationship between this site and Lafayette Park. And you'll also notice that there are a number of buildings in the area that are former industrial buildings that have been converted. This building here is Whitlock Mills and Lafayette Lofts behind it. Beautiful renovated preserved buildings create sort of a little bit of an industrial village in this neighborhood. And the Manning Avenue Street is cobblestone, so it has that old historic neighborhood feeling. This is a view looking west on Communal Ave. You can see the Steel Tech Head House. That is an existing building that will be rehabbed and repurposed. And the majority of the site is up here on the left. You'll see a smokestack from a building nearby in the background. And then again, back to the site. I think what's important for site planning on this site is you'll notice that the site sits squarely between Berry Lane Park and Lafayette Park. And I think when we look at this, you, you recognize there's an opportunity to do something here where you can connect those dots. You can see here is red line that I've superimposed on the plan that if you were to be able to create a visual corridor or a pedestrian link through the site and organize the components of the site, the four buildings and the open space around such a pedestrian walkway, an opportunity would exist to connect them and create a, a public asset. And also provide access to the light rail station through the site. This is overall building organization here. You'll see the white building where it says 417 Communal is held below the red line. And the other buildings, which I'll go through on the next slide, allow for a connection through the site. This here is a more of an overview of the site. I mentioned there were four components. The primary component is this 18-story residential building that is in its L shape. There is a one-story neighborhood commercial building of 14,000 square feet, which will be a marketplace for local vendors and purveyors. There is a four-story recreation building to the left here. Fronting on Berry Lane Park, which will be a community recreation center. There's a parking, a component associated with that recreation center. And, and then there's this public open space alongside this pedestrian connection, which would be presented in the next few slides. But the idea here is if you were to come along Manning Ave. Cross Communal, you can go right through the site and connect to Berry Lane Park. And, you know, creating a view corridor and a pedestrian connection and enhancing the pedestrian realm in, in this neighborhood. So as I started looking at this project, I happened to be going to Toronto, and we, we discovered this distillery district, which is a former industrial complex that has been converted to commercial and retail. And this, this place in Toronto provided us with the architectural styling inspiration. This is a kind of brick paved sidewalk with commercial buildings on either side, brick buildings that have been rehabbed. And this, this presents a, a concept and a style that we really think would be appropriate for the design of this former industrial building. This is additional views. You can see that those spaces are often used for outdoor dining and public events. And it really creates a sense of place that people really enjoy and love to go to. And you could see here in Toronto, they're building modern buildings next to it, so it can coexist in this example. As in, and again, this is just providing inspiration for the architectural styling of the project. This is a view from Manning Ave. Looking at the site directly south. Steel Tech Head House is on the right. The Ten Mark Building is here on the I'm sorry, the head house is on the left. The Ten Mark Building is here on the right. If you were to pick yourself up above Manning Ave. and look at the site, you'll see Berry Lane Park in the distance. And then behind me, of course, is the, is the Lafayette Park. And you could see that if we were to connect through the site, this red stripe that I've shown on the screen, you'd be able to connect those two areas through the site, and that's a very important aspect of our site planning. If I pick myself up and I look into the site from this position, the Steel Tech building is on the left, Berry Park Lane in the right. And here we have a simulation. I'll be able to show you what that would look like at the conclusion of the construction of the project. You'll see here we have the tech building on the left, the Steel Tech building. And, and this image on the lower right, you're able to see this, this pedestrian connection that will traverse the site. Lauren Venon will talk about Uh, Lauren Venon will talk about uh h- how it's landscaped with uh historically referenced uh lighting fixtures and street furniture and that this entrance and plaza was designed to create a sense of place and allow for connections. A a closer view. I can zoom in here and you'll be able to see uh what the what that place feels like. Um. The the overall idea, a- as you can see, is to is is to in in create a sense a a sense of place here to create more than just a building and a parking garage and a store. It's really about making connections uh for the neighborhood. Um, and so I'll uh so that is the overall site planning again to allow the buildings to uh to permit the uh the the walkway to go through and incorporate that as a public aspect of our open space plan. With that, I'm going to conclude on the site planning and um answer any questions you have. That concludes my exhibit and uh the next presenter will be my associate, um Juan Rodriguez, who will present the architectural solution.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Marchetto. Um, yeah, I have no questions yet on the uh, you know, just the general overview. Anybody else?
Yeah, Chair.
Uh, excuse me. Uh, Mr. Marchetto, I have one question for you.
Yes.
This particular slide shows the rec centers being four stories.
Yes.
Is it four stories or three stories? I believe it's three stories.
It is a three-story building. However, um, there is a stairway component that goes up that I think it's just a stair bulkhead. Juan Rodriguez will be able to answer that question for you, but it's a three-story building with a with a elevator uh and stair that goes up to the roof. So technically that bulkhead makes it a four-story building.
Okay. I don't have any further questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, commissioners, any questions? I think I heard one.
Yeah, Chairman, uh, for Dean Marchetto, hey, Dean. Uh, yeah, the rationale for keeping the Steelhead Building, I mean, it blends in brilliantly, but a, you know, I I I'm thinking from a developmental point that could be used or built in for greater density, but.
The building will be used for a commercial uh commercial and retail, so it'll it'll have a commercial aspect to it. It's not residential.
Right. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Marchetto.
Okay, I'll unshare. I can't find.
All right, we got you.
All right, so we're doing Juan Rodriguez next.
Correct.
All right, great. I want I'll just swear in if you could raise your right hand. You swear into someone you give tonight is gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
For the record, can you speak to your name, please?
Juan Rodriguez, J U A N R O D R I G U E Z.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez, good evening. Uh, we've qualified you in the past as well. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
All right, if I could just share my screen.
Good evening, Mr. Rodriguez.
Good evening, good evening, commissioners. I'm just trying to share my screen here. Can everyone uh see the site plan?
We can, yes.
Okay, great. Everyone sees my mouse?
Yeah, right on the amenity deck there. Okay.
Awesome. Um, so uh, yeah, just to, I'll I'll kind of just try to run through uh some of the technical aspects of the project. I think Dean gave a a good overview of the overall composition of the plan. Uh, you know, it it is a it is a three that, you know, three point seven seven acre site. So it was important for us to uh really develop a comprehensive approach to the planning of the project. Uh, and we we spent a lot of time uh trying to develop a proper circulation and access uh through the site and into the site, both for pedestrians and for vehicles. So I'll just start there. Um, this dotted line uh is kind of traversing through the site from Communal Paul into Berry Lane is the the kind of main organizing spine through uh through, you know, through the site. Uh, it is a pedestrian-only walkway that's thirty feet wide. Uh, the redevelopment plan envisioned that there would be a thirty-foot plaza uh that would be required to provide access from Communal Paul. We decided to extend that thirty-foot walkway all the way through the site. So pedestrians can move from from Berry Lane Park into onto Communal Paul and keep going across uh Manning and eventually get to Lafayette Park. Uh, just playing north of that site, there's the the one-story market building. Uh, I have uh kind of close-up indoor plans uh of that market building to show you the programming and the interior configuration. Uh, there's also a kind of plan south of the of the dotted line. Uh, it's the eighteen-story building and again, we'll we'll show you the internal uh workings of each of these buildings uh with more technical drawings. Um, the 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 red arrows that are shown here uh along Communal Paul and Woodward show driveway curb cuts. So there is a curb cut proposed along Communal Paul to allow access to the commercial and loading area uh for the one-story market building. Uh, then there are two more proposed curb cuts along Woodward. One being uh primarily intended to allow for residents to access this drop-off court, uh giving this kind of hotel uh style drop-off area, uh bringing cars into into the site um and allowing them to access to inside of the garage, this kind of gray hatched area here off of the drop-off court.
Mr. Rodriguez, Mr. Rodriguez, what is the of the curb cut uh now on on Woodward?
There's a twenty-two foot curb cut, I believe, that's indicated on our survey uh a- along that along uh Communal Paul now.
I'm sorry, give me a break. What uh what are we requesting the width be?
We're requesting, I believe, the the curb cut to be sixteen feet. Uh, our our uh our civil team and traffic team will be giving additional testimony uh to the to the proposed width of the curb cut and the intended use of of the curb cut uh as it will function for loading areas.
And that is a deviation, correct?
Correct.
Okay, continue. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
It's okay. Uh, so to the to the left of the residential curb cut coming off of the drop-off area, there's an additional curb cut uh with with this red arrow on where my mouse is right now. That is intended to be uh access for uh public parking. Uh, the the rec center will provide forty public parking spaces in a pave lot along Woodward Street. Uh, that pave lot will contain uh the forty required spaces and be screened from from Woodward uh through a planting strip containing trees along the entire perimeter of that parking lot. A series of blue arrows also indicate uh primary pedestrian access points into each building. So at the corner of this thirty-foot walkway coming off of Communal Paul, uh there will be pedestrian access into the market building from Communal Paul. Uh, there will also be secondary access points along the walkway and along the open space uh wrapping this this L-shaped market building. The residential entry is is envisioned to be set back approximately a hundred and fifty feet from Communal Paul uh on below an overhang of the building and we'll show you more images and renderings of what that uh that rendering will look and feel, uh, sorry, what that entry will look and feel like. Uh, another blues, blue triangle here along uh Berry Lane will provide access for the public to enter the Recreation Center building. Uh, is envisioned that this new reconfigured entryway uh will will be an extension of the existing Berry Lane walkway uh and and will give uh access both in terms of steps and ADA access uh for the main uh rec center lobby. As part of the the off-street improvements, we will also be extending the existing uh sidewalk and off-street parking across the Woodward frontage of our site. Uh, extending the that where where there is now no sidewalk, there's the existing sidewalk will be extended all the way to the corner um and connecting into the Communal Paul Avenue sidewalk. This is a rendering of the of the proposed open space. Uh, this the this kind of brick paved area is the thirty-foot walkway going from end to end of the site. Uh, on the right-hand side uh is the the residential building. In the in the foreground here, sorry, in the background, is the proposed market building, the one-story market building with uh openings to allow for direct connection and a visual connection into the open space. And on the left-hand side, there's a a proposed one-story uh food pavilion. Uh, you could see that the 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 kind of quality and character of the open space is in tune with the with the industrial uh kind of modern fabric that Dean referenced from the Distillery District in Toronto. Uh, more detail will be provided uh for the types of uses and and materials and design treatments of this of this open space, but generally, the the space is intended to be used for recreation, uh food uh and different types of public and community events. This is another view of that open space, kind of looking from the west side, looking east. Uh, again, the market building is on the left, the Recreation Cen- Center here is on the right. Uh, you will see Berry Lane Park is on the right-hand side. Uh, there's a series of different types of spaces in this open space. Uh, there's pa- there are paved areas intended to be used for outdoor food, uh some uh grass lawn areas, some gravel areas for use, uh different type of recreation events. Uh, is it, it is intended that this space will be used for uh things like art art events, holiday events, uh different food markets. So it really is intended to be a type, the type of space that's used by the public uh by residents at different times of the day and different times of the year. And it's going to be activated by different uses, including the the uh the kind of food uh commercial building on the left, the residential lobby and amenities uh kind of lining this walkway and the Recreation Center. So at different times of the day, there will always be uh kind of people activating this space.
Mr. Rodriguez, these are community benefits as described in the redevelopment plan, are they not?
Correct. Where the plant, where the plan envisions uh twenty thousand square feet of open space be the minimum that's provided. We were proposing uh close to forty thousand square feet of open space uh through this open space that you're seeing here, the the walkway connecting onto uh Communal Paul and an additional plaza that's uh being located in front of the the Steel Tech Head House.
Okay, please go on with the structure now.
You'll see here um uh this kind of rectangular shaped uh area is the residential building. This blue highlighted rectangle is the Recreation Center building. And this this tan orange color uh here is the commercial uh is the commercial building. Um, starting with a kind of access and general organization. There's a, there's this drop-off area uh bringing cars into the garage. Uh, so all of the parking is located within the building. Uh, then there's also a series of uh lobby and amenity areas, including lobby, leasing office, uh indoor amenity that's intended to be some type of co-working space, uh bike storage. Uh, all of these kind of public uh aspects of the building or quasi-public aspects of the building uh will be lining this plaza space and lining the open space uh including retail uh in the totaling seven thousand four hundred and twenty-five square feet. All kind of configured to uh uh to to kind of provide activity and uh more more kind of public open uses uh a- a- along these uh these plazas. Just with the inner workings of the garage, uh there would be a a garage door here off of the drop-off court. Uh, you would have two floors of parking above this, so this is would be a ramp that would bring you to several floors of parking above. And then another ramp that kind of brings you to a lower level here uh with all the loading and trash um and kind of mechanical areas being located inside of the building. As part of the project, the the existing Steel Tech Head House will also be rehab for commercial use. Uh, it's intended that the outside of the building as well as uh, you know, the base roof facade, the windows, the roofing will all be re- uh rehabilitated. Uh, and there is also uh uh an extension proposed uh to the existing head house as a one-story extension to allow for a larger commercial space uh that that's proposed to be as a second phase to to this kind of single-phase comprehensive project. On the second floor, uh, we have parking that's uh in the form of uh all all self-park. Uh, the total parking count is two hundred and thirty-three uh residential spaces, where two hundred and ten is the minimum that's required. Uh, there are also forty parking spaces uh that are for the public on the ground floor uh for a total of two hundred and seventy-three total parking spaces. There are, there are some uh some storage spaces and some mechanical areas also on the second floor. Above that, uh, there's another level of parking and there are some, uh, there's a a an amenity space uh located on the third floor as well. Uh, and it's intended that this amenity space uh will again serve to activate and become a a kind of visual beacon uh for this uh kind of prominent uh nose of the building uh fronting onto the plaza. At the fourth floor, you'll see that this uh kind of the L-shaped building now starts to step back away from Woodward. Uh, it steps back from the west. It kind of, it's it's kind of set back from all uh boundaries of the site. Um, uh kind of compacting its form um to provide the 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 four hundred and twenty uh proposed units. Uh, you'll see here the residential unit mix that's being proposed. Uh, so uh ninety-two units, twenty-two percent of the total units will be studios. Uh, a hundred and fifty-two units, uh thirty-six percent will be one-bedroom units. Forty-five units will be one-bedroom den units at eleven percent. Two-bedroom, uh, the two-bedroom count is ninety-six units at twenty-three percent. And thirty-five units uh will be three bedrooms at eight percent. That is totaling four hundred and twenty units. Uh, out of the four hundred and twenty units, uh five percent of those units will be affordable. Uh, the affordable units will be mixed uh through different floors of the plan. There won't be uh kind of concentrated onto one area, but there'll be mixed through uh all the floor plans you'll see here on the plans that those those units are identified um and labeled on each of the floor plans. Uh, those units will be provided the same level of finish uh as the regular market rate units. They'll be provided the same access to all the amenities as the market rate units as well. Uh, and the breakdown of the affordable uh units uh consists of uh two units being studios, two units being one bedrooms, twelve units being two bedrooms, and five units being three bedrooms, again totaling twenty-one units. At this floor, uh, there is a a about a nineteen thousand six hundred uh thirty square foot amenity deck. Uh, uh, this is above the parking and there is proposed to be a pool also uh along this landscape amenity terrace. This is the first uh kind of type of uh typical floor plan. So this is the fifth through ninth floor. You will notice that the entire building is set back from Woodward Street uh fifty feet. And there are about thirty-one units on this typical floor on floors five through nine. In compliance with the goals of the plan, the building starts to step back away from Woodward in twenty-foot increments. And so as the building goes up, it gets smaller along Woodward, having a less of a a kind of visual impact along the Woodward Street frontage. Uh, there are also a series of balconies proposed that project out uh kind of along the west side of the building as well. And here again, you're seeing the building start to kind of step back and get smaller as you're going up to the upper floors. At the roof of the building, there's proposed to be a four thousand nine hundred uh and five square foot amen- indoor amenity space. Uh, there is also a kind of panoramic uh roof terrace that will be an amenity for the for the tenants. Uh, there are also a series of mechanical areas, including solar panels, uh green roof areas and screened off mechanical areas along the roof as well. This is a rendering of the outside of the building. Uh, this is the frontage along Communal Paul, the Steel Tech Head House is on the left-hand side, the market building is on the right-hand side. Uh, some kind of uh original inspiration was gathered from the post-industrial nature of the site uh being a steel manufacturing facility. Uh, you know, we really liked the You know, we really liked the the idea of these kind of these picture frame steel metal components that are extruded. We we kind of decided to compose the the overall L-shaped building as a series of these stacked metal boxes. So the overall composition is less of one large beside and more of a kind of a smaller residential scale series of stacked boxes. To to kind of articulate those boxes, we looked at some of the industrial masonry facades that kind of articulate the 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 north side of Communipaw. You'll see some of these facade treatments were then kind of analyzed further and the kind of, we try to just pull some of the proportions of existing window openings, this is existing masonry to opening ratios. And we started to come up with these different facade compositions. So the the overall building composition is is primarily metal and glass with these kind of stacked picture frame boxes, all having kind of unique character to them that relates to that that kind of post-industrial fabric of those existing structures, just kind of north of Communipaw. You'll see here that the base of the building, we thought that that was important to to kind of create that that masonry industrial feel at the at the kind of pedestrian level so that the masonry base wraps along the 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 parking garage side. It it kind of masonry extends along Woodward with green screening being kind of intermixed along the garage facade. And then that that masonry also then extends on to the west side. This is the the elevation that fronts on to the pedestrian walkway. So you'll see that along this walkway, we're really treating it as kind of a new urban street, it's a new urban condition where you're able to walk through Communipaw being on the left-hand side. You're walking through the under this kind of overhang of the building, getting you into a lobby. Along that walkway, you're seeing lobbies, you're seeing amenities, you're seeing retail frontage. And then ultimately, you're seeing this kind of gray building here, this kind of grayish-blue masonry building, which is the rec center. We also kind of spent some time on the articulation of this facade. You'll see here, some of the some balconies that are located at kind of alternate floors. We thought it was important to introduce some type of kind of horizontal break in the facade to kind of break down the scale of the of this kind of building as it fronts on to the open space. And you'll see here, this is the south elevation. This is the elevation that fronts on to Berry Lane Park. On the bottom is the 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 proposed elevation of the rec center rendered in a this kind of grayish-blue brick. We also tried to introduce some blue color to play off of some of the vibrant colors that are located within Berry Lane. And then up above it, the residential building, which is actually stepped back seventy-five feet, is a, you know, has again this treatment of these series of stacked boxes that all step back, creating this kind of step-back condition along Woodward, which is on the right-hand side. This is a section of the building showing how the the kind of general composition of the floors works. Kind of look on the right-hand side. The the building is, it it kind of feels like a seventeen-story building. However, we have a a condition where where we have an additional P-two parking level creating an eighteenth floor. So technically, it's an eighteen-story building. However, on the the kind of pedestrian walkway side, it would look and feel like a seventeen-story building.
Is is that the deviation that we've noticed for that you just explained?
Correct. We had.
Technical deviation, is it not?
Correct, correct.
And what 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 triggered that? Could you tell us again?
Yeah, so we, the 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 plan allows for in a seventeen-story building within a hundred and ninety feet. Our building is is has a total of a hundred and ninety feet. However, we have an additional parking floor at the base of the building that would create an additional floor in in the bottom of the building. And it basically the the seventeen floor then becomes the eighteen floor because all the other kind of story starts to get pushed up. So.
The overall height is one ninety, which is allowed, correct?
Correct.
Under the redevelopment plan.
That's correct.
Okay. Continue, please.
This is a close-up of the the neighborhood commercial building. This is, as Dean touched upon, this is a fourteen thousand square foot building. It has this kind of L shape with the with the kind of outside corner of the L fronting on to the plaza and kind of cafe areas. It's intended that this building it's really, it's really intended to function kind of like a Chelsea Market, like a food hall with the mixture of food and and beverage and retail uses. A portion of this of the of the vendors will be about forty thou, sorry, forty percent of those vendors will be minority women, veteran-owned disadvantaged small businesses. So this is intended to be a a market building that has market rate tenants, but also allows for members of the community to also kind of, you know, have have startup businesses and and really be part of this kind of overall environment that that we're trying to create. The we're we're showing this as a as a kind of big open box. But the intention is that this space will be filled similar to Union Market in Washington DC, that this space will be filled with, you know, twenty or thirty kind of small scale, about a hundred or or two hundred square foot small-scale vendors that kind of make up this food hall. And again, out of those vendors, forty percent of them would be kind of below market rate for the for the community. These are renderings of the outside of the building. You'll see again a repeat of the the masonry materials along the base. We have a series of large openings along the kind of public sides, the 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 facades that front on to the plaza and open space. It's intended that these openings could be kind of garage-style doors that lift up and allow the food hall to I'm sorry, have a direct connection to the plaza spaces. You'll also notice that one of the features is it's kind of sawtooth shape to the roof of the building. That's something that's picking up some of the the cues from some of the existing industrial buildings, just kind of north of Communipaw. These are enlarged floor plans of the Recreation Center. So it's important to note that that what you're seeing here, this four-story recreation building in the kind of shape and and kind of overall layout that is in has was been, you know, it was developed alongside city planning, the Division of Architecture, the City Recreation Department, along with Councilman Gilmore. So this was, we went through a process of of kind of programming and coordination with those four entities to develop the interior layout of the Recreation Center. The requirement was for a twenty-two thousand square foot facility, which is what this is being proposed as. The the kind of core program of the of the Recreation Building is a ba, is an indoor basketball court, which was located on the ground floor. We felt that it was critical to locate the basketball court on the ground floor to give the kind of right connection to the administrative areas, also on the ground floor and access, you know, good handicap access and accessible access at the ground floor. What would what that then kind of yielded was that the balance of the twenty-two thousand square foot program to kind of restrict the the kind of structural implications and the cost implications of overbuilding on a free-span structure of the basketball court. The remaining of the remainder of that program then had to be located outside of the footprint of the basketball court, which is why we're we're seeking relief for the the third story within this recreation building. Also alongside the coordination that took place with the Division of Architecture, there was a request for a roof terrace to be used as part of this recreation building. I guess the the goal is to have a visual connection to Berry Lane Park or perhaps some community garden space up on a roof terrace. So we then also extended a vestibule stairs and an elevator to a fourth floor, which is the, it's the roof slash the fourth floor of the Recreation Center Building. And you'll see here, this is a rendering of what that Recreation Center Building will look and feel like. This is the existing walkway along Berry Lane Park. The new kind of extension of that walkway, bringing you into a lobby here. And I I I would say that the main feature of this building is kind of new stair that would have a mixture of glass, windows and and solid panels to kind of give a visual connection of the stair, bringing people up through the building. You you would imagine if this is a four-story building with kids going up and down classrooms and dance rooms and music rooms, that this stair would be used a lot. And we thought that it was important to show that activity out on out on the kind of Berry Lane Park side. And again, you're seeing here the the kind of the line of trees that is intended to wrap around the parking garage. And then up above the the residential building that has this kind of series of stepbacks kind of reducing the overall scale along this kind of important and boring Berry Lane frontage.
Mister Mister Rodriguez, while this slide is up, one of the deviations that we've noticed for and asked for concerns the setback from Woodward Street on the ninth floor. Would you point that out and explain that to the board and the necessity for that deviation?
Yes. So the plan envisions that there is a ser, there are a series of stepbacks at the ninth floor and the twelfth floor. Because of the technical deviation that's being requested with the parking, with the P-two parking level at the base of the building. What would this, this would have been the ninth floor, and then this would have been the twelfth floor. But because there's an additional floor at the base of the building, this now becomes the tenth floor and this becomes the thirteenth floor. So there's relief to being requested to allow for this additional portion to be built out at the tenth floor, and then this additional portion be built out at the at the thirteenth floor.
But the height of the building has not changed, correct?
Correct, correct, a hundred, the hundred and ninety-foot line of the building is still maintained.
Okay, thank you.
I I would also say that the overall FAR that's envisioned for the building is is also within the 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 guidelines of the redevelopment plan. So the building is no bigger or taller than it would be allowed for from the redevelopment plan. We have a technical deviation because of the additional parking level that that kind of triggers the stories condition.
Okay, thank you.
I would say that with this slide, that concludes my presentation. I I would be happy to answer any questions or go back to anything to give more clarity.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. Believe it or not, I only have two questions. That was a very detailed presentation. You answered any question I had on my mind to begin with. But just two. The drop-off in the front, is that, I'm sorry, the drop-off along Woodward? Is that open for public use, say, to drop off for events for the rec center, anything like that?
So I'll go back to that slide, Mr. Chairman. So we have two drop-offs. One, I'll start with the easy one on the left. So if you're coming to this recreation building, if you're a parent dropping off your child at this recreation building, you'll be able to come into this parking lot. And you could either park here and you're you're, you know, you could drop off or you could come into this parking lot, temporarily park along this frontage and then back yourself out.
Okay.
So there's there's drop-off for the Recreation Center within this dedicated lot. Okay, if you're, if you're, if you're someone, if you're you're an Uber driver or a resident that's picking someone up, you could come through through this drop-off area, temporarily park and and, you know, load a passenger. If you're someone coming in and you're dropping off the, you know, let's say someone into the the market building, it is envisioned that you probably could also come through this drop-off and make your way back out. There is also provision for temporary visitor parking within within the the residential building that's intended to be kind of working in units in with with the market building as well.
Okay, excellent. And that that actually leads into my second question. You talked about the forty additional parking spaces for the public in your presentation. Those are the the outside spots by the rec center, or those are internal to the building?
The the forty spaces that are for the public are these right here, those are outdoor.
Okay, so they're on that surface lot. How do you, how would the applicant make sure that those spots are used for the rec center versus, you know, just private storage of vehicles for the neighborhood?
Mister Mister Chairman, those spots and the rec center have been subdivided out and they will be deeded to the city. That whole lot will be deep, that whole new tax lot will be deeded to the city. So the city will regulate that. It wouldn't be.
Okay.
Oh, responsible.
Okay, so the applicant has no no managerial duties with the rec center or the parking lot after after it's turned over to the city. All right, understood, thank you. All right, anybody else? Any questions?
This is Commissioner Torres. I do have two quick questions still. And my first one will be back to the park at two where the drop-off is. You mentioned that have a off of Woodlaw where the drop-off, where you do the circle around in the drop-off, you go inside with the trucks to go inside for moving and garbage facilities? Is that you can be able to go through?
Yeah.
Not on Woodlaw, over on the drop-off where you go up, yes, and it comes back around the circle. And you go right where you cushion.
And here.
Right there, yes.
Yeah, so we have two entries into the the parking garage and loading areas. There is one entry coming off of the kind of residential drop-off through here. It's a little bit of a turn, so big trucks wouldn't be able to maneuver through here.
Okay.
We have a, we have a secondary entrance. We are along Woodward. And we're also seeking an easement to be able to access through this public parking garage to be able to handle trash pickup and large loading vehicles. So there's two, there are two more garage doors here along Woodward. So larger trucks would be able to get in and back in through Woodward through this.
So basically, that one did, and if let's say somebody was moving in, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be leaving the trucks outside to move in. And that's that lot is going to be designated to the city, basically, right? Stopping people from parking, coming into the parking lot and being able to use those spaces.
Exactly. Yeah, all of the, all of the the trucks would be able to pull, be pulled into the garage.
Into the garage, so there won't be nobody blocking the parking lot or anything like that.
Yeah, there's, there's, there should be no need for a truck to disturb this parking lot. All of the loading activities and access activities will be temporary.
Okay, good, good. Um, real quickly, one of them that with the balconies, I have a question with your balconies. Are the north and south mandarin that you show? It's a safety question that I have with these balconies. Can we see where your mandarin is on that?
So. Right here.
Okay.
On the west side.
Is there any setback or is that a straight drop right to the sidewalk? So if I was on that balcony, straight down, there's no setback, there's no roof platform, anything else coming straight down that balcony?
That's correct. The the balconies project.
People had a party up there and they dropped something that's just going to go straight down to whoever walking underneath there. There's no there's a thing I have with these balconies now, I see these balconies in areas where everybody's walking and people are top with a clear open area. With a clear open area. So because it it almost look like you have some type of setback, but now I don't see that at all. How high is the glass up there?
I believe it's forty two inches.
Forty two inches?
Yeah.
Not much. I I that that concept, I don't understand that concept. Well, it's just just taking a risk of. Putting balconies in an area where people are walking underneath. It's just. I know they're nice to have, but. It's it's just real dangerous. Real dangerous. At that height doesn't take much to cause damage. All right, that's all I got done. I just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Any questions?
I'll just, Commissioner or Chairman, if I have a chance, I just wanted to add a couple things, so. The. The third story on the recreation center is a step back or setback variance. Not like an additional or a height variance. Technically. And regarding the residential tower, the step backs on the residential tower that they spoke to. Staff has reviewed them. And confirmed that the the I Z O, the inclusionary zoning ordinance is not triggered.
Okay.
Through through their proposal.
All right, thanks, Matt. All right, Mister Rodriguez, thank you, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
We'd like to call Lauren. Then and now from Dresner Robin is our next witness.
Hi, Lauren, I'll just swear in if you raise your hand. You swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? And like I told Matt, I just need to speak up. You guys are a little difficult to hear, all right? Thank you.
Ms. Vannan, good evening. I believe we've qualified you in the past. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you, you're qualified.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Ms. Vannan, would you take us through the. The slides that pertain to your. The work that you did on this project concerning your landscape?
Yes, I'm gonna bring up. Excuse me, I'm gonna bring up a screen share. So I'm going to be presenting from a. Web based. Experience view of the site this evening and. The link to this presentation as well as the images that we'll be presenting as part of it. Will be included in a PDF, a single PDF that will be submitted as an exhibit.
Thank you.
So.
Mister Salgin, we'll just mark this as a three for purposes of the record.
A three, Mister Laffey, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so architecture gave us a wonderful orientation to the site and to the overall arrangement of the site plan and of the public spaces. So I'm going to focus in on our streetscapes and ordinance compliance as well as some of the. Materials and details of the public spaces we are creating. So we're going to start on Communipaw app. Just gotta rearrange my. Site a little bit here. So I can see what I'm doing. Sorry for the delay there. All right, so we're going to start on Communipaw app and we are creating a Jersey City Far Shire Standard Compliance Streetscape. We have five by ten open tree pits. We are using surface space, which is a flowering tree. It's on the Far Shire Improved List and it's a smaller diameter tree. Works with the high level of pedestrian traffic and slightly narrower sidewalks on Communipaw. Excuse me. The streetlights for Communipaw app are called out on our site plan submission as the Contempo two LED light. As per comments from Jersey City Engineering, we will be switching those to the Jersey City Signature Feature, P S E N G compliant LED fixture. The sidewalk on Communipaw will be complying with Jersey City Standard charcoal gray five by five scoring pattern. Coming down to Woodward. On Woodward Street, we are creating a streetscape that. Fits in with and mirrors what was created on the southern portion of Woodward during the construction of Berry Lane Park. Mister Rodriguez. Mentioned the planting that was buffering and screening the parking lot. The the benefit of the planting and the arrangement that we have right now is to have. These arrangement of curb. Sidewalk and then planting shrub with street trees and lights. This matches the design vocabulary along the street edge of Berry Lane Park. And it ties the rec center and the parking lot that belongs to the rec center in with the park to create a cohesive. Continuous design and streetscape along all of Woodward. We do have a comment from Jersey City Engineering requesting. The Jersey City Signature Light and Traditional Tree Pits. I would ask the board to consider. Having us proceed with the streetscape that we're showing here and proceed with the light fixture selection, which is the Contempo two. It's an LED. P S E N G compliant fixture. There's a hundred and one of them in Berry Lane Park and along. Woodward Streetscape existing, so it really does add to the design vocabulary and keep with a cohesive appearance to all of Woodward. So we are going to come back up. To the entrance into the site. We're going to take a look and take a little walk through some of our spaces here. Now, earlier in the presentation, Dean Marchandow spoke about the importance of the pedestrian connection that we are creating. Our site is four feet higher than Communipaw app, so in order to. Welcome visitors into the site and strengthen this pedestrian connection, pedestrian walkway through the site. And encourage visitors into the plaza adjacent to the head house, which is being preserved. We are creating two entry points. At the head house plaza, we have monument stairs. This is a four inch riser and sixteen inch tread. So it really pulls the staircase back and lessens the appearance of that changing grade from the street. At the thirty foot wide pedestrian walkway, we've created a gradually sloping walkway. We are less than five percent. So we are ADA compliant without the need for any kinds of handrails or anything that qualifies strictly as a ramp. We are welcoming visitors into the site with a structural sculptural element. Looking to evoke the ideas of the site's industrial past using a finish reminiscent of a core ten or of an industrial steel. And fixing a compliant sized wave binding side sign to our sculptural element. We repeat this element at various points along the pedestrian walkway. So that wave finding can be added and edited as needed. Once the site becomes occupied and and as it evolves. We are also creating sculptural elements that will become light fixtures. Again, to evoke the overall industrial past of the site. We're going to come up and enter into the site and take a look at some materials that we're using in the open space areas. All of our paving materials throughout the site are permeable. We're using a permeable brick in a red blend. This is a true brick in a permeable configuration of clay, kiln fired brick. Accent planting will also be brick, but will be in a dark gray tone. We are continuing and see our sculptural elements coming down along the pedestrian walkway. And the intention, we've created a space for public art. The the shape shown here is a placeholder. Client will work with any commentary on on selection and determination of what type of art fixture will go in in the future. As you look down towards the drop off area from Woodward, we're going to go to a slightly. Better view of that area so that you can. Take a look at how we have created our material selection on the entry. We are again staying with a permeable brick. So that our vehicular spaces are meeting stormwater regulations for green infrastructure through the use of permeable pavements. And still staying with, you know, consistent design vocabulary for the finishes on site. Parking lot at the recreation center will also be making use of permeable pavements with the use of porous asphalt. We're going to take a look now into our main public space here, which is the plaza adjacent to the neighborhood marketplace. So we've divided this roughly into thirds to have a artscape plaza, permeable brick plaza. Relating most directly to the marketplace building. Entering some green space with a bermed natural turf lawn area. With shade trees, creating a deconstructed bаск. And then another porous pavement area adjacent to the food and beverage building. This area is intended to be very flexible for future programming. We'll take a quick look into this area. You've seen some very nice views of this space already from. M H S's presentation, so we're just going to take a quick look. Serpentine wall that we've had and. At this burn space, which kind of creates a two sided amphitheater. You have some seat wall options with the serpentine wall and have the ability to be up on the burn also. We'll take one last look at that space from the walkway, so this is looking towards Berry Lane Park. We're looking back towards Communipaw and the head house area. And you can see we have a very gentle burning to this area. We are only going up about three feet. So we still are preserving line of sight. But are creating a place that can be used informally gathering seating. And possibly for. Any kind of event planning in the future. So we're going to come down the thirty foot pedestrian walkway. Our connections to Berry Lane Park at this point in time are shown more schematically. We will have to work with the city to finalize connections into the park. This will be done on park property, so the property line for Berry Lane. Is currently right here. Of course, these lots will be deeded over to the city. And at that time, we'll be able to finalize these connections. The intent is to work with the design vocabulary of the park and to preserve the existing trees to the extent that we can. The main entry into the rec center, as per the redevelopment plan, is on this corner. Visible from Woodward. And. Lets us come in to. Come into the rec center here directly from the park. We are pulling. The angles of our entry area and the angles of the pavement scoring pattern. From the angles in Berry Lane Park. So the designers in Berry Lane Park, those angles were very. Much part of the geometry of the space and we want to really strengthen the connection between the park and the rec center. As much as we can. That covers most of the landscaping at this point in time or tree selections are compliant with Far Shire Standards. And we are keeping with. More areas of. Smaller planting as accent planting and building planting and seating in together with built in benches. We're going to take a look at the lighting now and take a look at some night views of the site. I spoke earlier about the street lighting. Our light levels on the street lighting is are compliant with ordinance requirements. This is a night view of the custom sculptural element on the pedestrian walkway. We have concealed a light fixture in with it so that it. It is an element during the day and also provides light at night. We're making use of several. Linear light fixtures, step lighting, built in lighting along the seat walls. We're going to come up into the head house plaza now to take a look at some of the other light fixtures. We are using again a light fixture that has that very simple linear look to it that will give us a slightly. Better view of them on. This side of the tree blocks a little bit. And this is a standard light fixture. And we're looking to incorporate under lighting and accent lighting into our built in planter bench features where we can. Again, to make this the lighting on the site very even. We are ordinance compliant with the lighting and our photometrics are. Very, very even throughout the site so that we're providing a welcoming, safe feeling environment at night, some very clear lines of sight.
Early on, you mentioned that you wanted to substitute a particular light.
Yes.
Explain that and why we need that.
Yes, and I will go. I can go to. This view and you can take a look at the light picture that we want. We can't really see it too well on this one, my apologies. What I can do is pull up our lighting. Plan. And our. To show what we what we have for that area. We can figure how I'm looking at the screen here for a little bit to to get to the lighting plan. Okay, so along. Woodward Street, as you head down into the park and the rest of the streetscape of Woodward. We are using the Contempo two light fixture that is the established light along Woodward. It is a P S E N G compliant fixture. It's an LED fixture. And we would like to continue to use that light along Woodward Street. We will comply with. Engineers request to switch to the Jersey City Signature. Fixure on Communipaw because we don't have that established use of Contempo two on. Communipaw, but we feel it's valuable to the design vocabulary and the cohesiveness of the streetscape on Woodward to keep with the same light.
I have another question concerning one of the variances that we have is the landscape buffer.
Yes.
Would you explain that and why we need that deviation?
It's going to be easier to see that on the rendered plan, so we are going to take a look up here. So the redevelopment plan requires a continuous five foot wide landscape buffer. Between the buildings along Woodward and the parking lot. While we are providing a five foot wide buffer along the majority of the space in order to provide access into the building. And to provide a continuous walkway around the rec center while still accommodating. Required dimensions for parking, drive aisle and parking. We do have sidewalk breaks into that buffer in several locations.
And did this deviation arise after conversations with planning?
Yes. Yes, we did review the plan, well, planning and we were able to convert sort of a continuous sidewalk put in. Five foot wide buffer plantings in the majority of their own.
And what about the the deviation concerning the curb cut on Communipaw?
The curb cut on Communipaw up here. So there is an existing curb cut along Communipaw app. The existing curb cut is quite wide. I believe it scales at thirty five in the field. At thirty five feet in width in the field, we are reducing the width to twenty feet. And so we, while we are still deviating from the requirements and requirements and we are requesting relief on that. It is narrowing the curb cut from what is existing, so we are improving the existing conditions.
The last item is the setback of Berry Lane Park.
I am going to defer to our to Charles Height, our planner, on on these setbacks.
Okay, I don't have any further questions of this witness, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, counsel. Yeah, I have no questions on landscaping. Anybody else?
Nope.
All right, thank you, Ms. Vannan.
Thank you.
I'd like to call Mister Knowles.
And you're already sworn in, Matt, if you just confirm that you are still under oath from an hour ago.
All right, go ahead, Mister Knowles.
Like to show the screen again? Okay. Sorry, fancy this lot.
Start with this, this is the site, the site, the general site plan. This is a this is just a copy of what was submitted on the site plan and sheet C three oh one, the site plan set. It just, you know, I've been listening if they have a testimony, so I don't want to go over too much again, but just reinforcing and don't worry, just spoke about the driveway. So the retail and that's located there for reference, opposed to twenty feet wide, existing at thirty-five feet. So we think that's an improvement that's appropriate for the truck circulation in that area that will accommodate the trucks that we anticipate that will service those uses. So again, just going, just going down briefly, or describe a lot of the other improvements as well as their architectural testimony from both Mr. Rodriguez along Communipaw Avenue with the Steel Tech Head House being located here. I guess I will start really with this location here. This is where this is the vehicle drop off. Vehicles will enter into the site here. They can go around this this roundabout here to provide access to maybe drop people off under this covered area. Also, they can access the garage by coming in here, making a left turn into the garage here. So that's that's one access point. This vehicle surface is also permeable asphalt pavement. So this is a an asphalt where water will be able to 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 just sort of go through that surface and it's consistent with the state's stormwater rules and cities rules as well. So I think that's a, that's a nice feature. There's also a little bio retention structure in this area. We'll jump into on the next sheet, but sort of point out it's in the interior of that turnaround, which also allows stormwater to get into it and kind of infiltrate and be clean as well. So that's a nice feature. Working our way to the left, we've had some testimony about the parking lot, the surface parking lot, about forty cars. Those driveway here in this location, two-way, two-way full movement driveway onto the site. Oops. Thing here. I'm going to zoom in a little bit. Control control my technology for the moment. Just wanted to quickly touch base. When I testified before in the subdivision, I talked about the one he's been here to allow access, if you remember at that point. And this kind of shows what's going on over there. I know, I think Mr. Rodriguez talked a little bit about this area, but you have access and other access into the garage through this point here. And also the garbage pickup area located directly across from the driveway here and we filed the various trucks in this area to make those movements as such. So that's the purpose of the driveway here is for access to the forty spaces as well as as well as being able to access into the main building in these areas as well. And I think that's that's most of my testimony just on the basic site plan. I think it's pretty, pretty, pretty straightforward here. We'll go to the next to the next sheet, which is the grading and drainage plan. There we go. There we go. Well, I wanted to point out on the grading and drainage plan, I think it is important that this whole walkway that was just described in testimony here is composed of permeable pavers. So there are the paper elements. They have the look of pavers, but they also allow stormwater to pass through, again, consistent with the city's stormwater control ordinance as well as the statewide stormwater rules. That's a green infrastructure measure, allowing that water to go through. Also, there's storage under that, under that area as well as under the driveway. And in this little bio retention we talked about before. And that allows water from collected over the rooftops as well as over these areas to be stored there and to provide the appropriate reduction in flows to reduce the impact on the sewer system. And again, that meets the requirements and stormwater rules, both for water quality in this vehicle area here as well as the parking lot. Also, in terms of water quality, peak flow reduction, it said we meet the requirements throughout the site in that regard. And also wanted to mention there is permeable asphalt in the area of the recreation center parking lot. Quickly flipping to the utility plan. Again, just to put over views of these sheets. I have to zoom in a little bit, but just to give you a quick sense of where is connected water in central sewer with the buildings. You have a gas line proposed coming in from from Communipaw Avenue here. Geez, we have data coming in here. We have proposed water line connecting to Communipaw this location as well, coming to the main building. Utilities proposed for the retail building as well. It's there good. South here. Or down on page, I should say. So, so. Drainage coming through here. We have electrical transformers with these boxes over here and underground electrical condo coming into the site here to provide service to the building. And in that area. Also, other, like I said before, there'll be permeable pavement, but there's there's drainage lines to pick up that water once it's circulated through. And then we have a separate suite of utility connections for the community center over here. You have electric and gas, water, and also a sewer line connection right here to the community center. So that has its own separate utility, so. I think that may be most of my testimony with regard to the engineering is everything else has been addressed previously with architecture, the way it's architecture testimony.
All right, Mr. Knowles, did you receive responses from the MUA and the Division of Engineering?
Yes, we did. Yes.
If we go through that now, let's start with engineer.
The engineer's letter here for February third.
Right. Now, do you have an opportunity to discuss the contents of that letter with the applicant?
Yes.
And on your what was the applicant's response?
We work with the engineering division to address the items in the letter.
So no issue with the engineer. What about the, the MUA letter?
So we received two MUA letters on February's, February twenty-second and then February twenty-third. Both, you know, some of the items covered in the twenty-third letter, including replacement of the sewer line and such, and we would work with the MUA to address the limits of that work and any appropriate methods to 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 address those items.
I don't have any further questions of, of Mr. Knowles.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Yeah, I have no questions for Mr. Knowles either. Anybody else?
No.
All right. Thank you.
I'd like to call Charles Height as our last witness.
Sure. Mike, are you okay to break after Charles Height's testimony?
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, you got it.
Thank you, Mike.
All right. Hi, Charles. Let's bring in if you can raise your right hand. You just want any testimony to give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
For the record, can you state your name, please?
Yes, Charles Height, last name spelled H E Y D T.
Thank you.
Mr. Height, good evening. Your license is current tonight.
Bill Current in the state of New Jersey.
Great. Thank you. You're qualified.
All right. Good evening, board members. In the interest of time, we just wanted to be thorough with the the variance and deviation requests needed. Much of this has been covered in the technical aspects with respect to the plans. But I do want to just capture everything through my testimony. We did want to reference the setback variance for the rec center. So the code, the redevelopment of Berry Lane Park North District regulates setback distances for structures greater than two stories. Based on the design of the rec center, it's a three-story structure. It's required to be setback greater than seventy-five feet per code. That's the technical requirement. But the intent of the plan was always to locate the rec center at the footsteps of Berry Lane Park within a short stretch, less than five feet from that southern property boundary. So we are proposing a setback of one point one foot, three inches. But again, that that meets the intent of locating the rec center adjacent to Berry Lane Park. It just really is a matter of the technical layouts of the stories which triggers that setback variant. The other item with respect to landscaping between the parking lot, the forty-stairs parking lot, the surface parking lot and the building is a continuous five-foot buffer, landscaping buffer. Ms. Bennen references earlier. We are have having intermittent five-foot buffers. So the landscaping is still there. It's just strategically placed to work with any egress or access to the building. But again, the landscaping is incorporated in the overall design with the frontage along Woodward Street. We did reference the building height deviation in terms of number of stories. Again, seventeen stories is permitted, eighteen is proposed. And it is not an additional story at the top. It really comes down to how we itemize the base of the structure and the parking. Really, the ground floor level where the ground floor entrance is over is twenty-two feet. But when you look at the parking elements of it, the the first parking level is is twelve feet. The second parking level in that span is ten feet. So that's the the twenty-two feet at the ground level. Those two parking levels are counted as two, one story each. So that's the the eighteen store, if you will, that's second parking level. Mr. Rodriguez detailed that on the plans for the board earlier tonight. The the main structure, main residential structure, as was mentioned earlier, there are requirements for setbacks at different levels to create some light and air for along Woodward Street to tier the building back. At the ninth story, we are proposing a fifty-foot setback where the plan requires seventy feet. And again, at the twelve-story the seventy feet, seventy feet is required where ninety feet is required where seventy feet is proposed. And again, that really is a accounting, a accounting issue when you account for that second level parking. It bumps the whole order of the floors up, but it meets the intent of creating the tiers along Woodward Street. So that was one setback. And again, that's a setback deviation. There's also a deviation with respect to the curb cut along Communipaw. It, as written in the code, it's twelve feet permitted in terms of width and only an exit for loading. We are proposing to use that curb cut for access, two-way access for the neighborhood commercial facility. It's currently existing as twenty feet where we're proposing twenty feet. It's the 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 last the last except, the last variance that we, I just wanted to call out, just an abundance of clarity and transparency. When we're looking at the roof deck of the recreation center. The elevator and staircase are at the edge of the building. And typically in that instance, those are appurtenances that need to be set back internal to the center of the building. That's called the appertinent setback requirement of one foot, one inch. Given that the elevator is approximately the greatest height of fifteen feet, the setbacks require to be sixteen point two five feet. And we are proposing it to locate at zero feet along the building facade. We saw from Mr. Rodriguez earlier, the elevations of the rec center, how it's incorporated into the overall facade design. So there really is no visual impact. You don't even perceive it as a rooftop pertinent as part of the overall design of the building. One item to clarify with with respect to the the five, so so we do have the setback along Berry Lane Park. I referenced as the minimum for the rec center would be five feet. Again, we are proposing at one point three feet. So it's the same condition that we're proposing for the rec center. But we figured the setback for the stories of three stories from seventy-five feet required for three stories. But also any, any two-story structure would need to be set back five feet. So it's one in the same variance. I just wanted to clarify that with respect to the setback for the rec center. That's the positive criteria. I did reference some of the design aspects that were testified earlier. With respect to the negative criteria, we did work on the amendment. We did present that to the board. We did return to the board to present the master plan consistency of any of the board members many months ago. We do believe that the relief needed tonight is one hundred percent lockstep with the intent of the amendment as well as the redevelopment plan. So just to be clear, with respect to any detriment to the general welfare, the light and air with all of the setback variances is still being maintained and preserved with respect to the intent and access for the rec center as well as the overall building height in the tier, tiering of the of the main residential building. One hundred and ninety feet is permitted, one hundred and ninety feet is proposed. So no impact there with light and air as with respect to the the requirements. With respect to the landscaping and the access, these are minor relief needed, deviations needed. It really is the full evolution of of the site design and plan design as you see presented today. I don't believe there's any impairment with respect to creating access along Communipaw Avenue. The neighborhood facility does have its off-road parking in that location. A vehicle can also unload and load in that area and it will be a modest introduction of trips. And there already is an existing curb cut that we're utilizing in that area. So there's no impact with respect to that, that deviation request. As we move into any substantial impairment of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Again, I'll reiterate some purposes of the 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 purpose of the Berry Lane North Zone to encourage a denser pattern of development where housing is within proximity to public park space and the light rail station to create easily accessible community facilities adjacent to a public park. So given that, I just want to reiterate we are providing a rec center as part of the community benefits, twenty-two thousand square feet required. We are meeting that twenty-two thousand square foot rec center incorporating a basketball, indoor basketball court and a variety of other indoor spaces. We are providing a neighborhood commercial facility for incubator businesses. As Mr. Rodriguez mentioned, forty percent will be preserved for SWV, SMWV business enterprises. Lastly, the requirement for open space in addition to Berry Lane Park. The minimum requirement for this Berry Lane Park zone, Berry Lane Park North Zone is twenty thousand square feet. This application is providing thirty-four thousand nine hundred and forty square feet. So an abundance of open space being provided and and all at the best interest of the intent of the redevelopment plan. We do further purposes of the general redevelopment plan what that we're under within the Morse now redevelopment area. I won't go through those. They're in the statement of principal points. I believe the other two components with respect to community benefits that we wanted to reiterate are one, the widening of Woodward Street. There's current encroachments along Woodward. We have straightened Woodward along the western edge, removing those encroachments, straightening out Woodward Street, providing the necessary roadway, right of way with. We are also preserving the Steel Tech Head House building that Mr. Lipsky mentioned earlier. And then lastly, we are committed to the inclusionary zoning that was created for the amendment, which is five percent and yielding a total of twenty-one units that meet the the distribution requirements of the city. That's all I have tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions and we're really excited for this project. We've worked with the community for more than three years at this point and are happy to present it to this board tonight.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Height. Counsel, anything for your last witness?
The, I have nothing further of Mr. Height. I'd like to point out that Gary Dean, who is our traffic expert, is available, but I do not intend to call him unless the board wants me to.
Okay.
Okay, um at this point, I'm okay, uh we'll reserve that right, uh but at this point, I'm okay without it. Um Mister Height, thank you for the the testimony, it's always uh very detailed, uh I do have one question. And I I apologize, maybe I should have asked uh Ms. Venin this earlier. Uh she showed an internally lit wayfinding sign along that public uh public right of way.
Okay, we might, we might have to call her back, um did you want, yeah, she's coming in now, did you want to detail that plan, what was your question about it?
Um is that compliant with the plan, is that a deviation?
Yeah, so I'll confirm that now, Lauren, it's uh the wayfinding signs, the internal internal movement illumination.
Have to double check the plan on that as to whether or not the illumination, if if it is not compliant. We can will certainly revise that. It's part of a sculptural element that would have some internal lighting to it, but we can certainly modify that as needs. We can find with these requirements.
If if the board so chooses, I would request that deviation if the design is better. As presented, uh so we don't have to come back to the board, uh if necessary.
Yeah, there's no illumination with respect to the signage for this zone. We we wrote signage standards specifically for this um. For this Berry Lane Park North and didn't, there there was no illumination required, so unless there's. A general prohibition on it, I I don't think it's regulated based on the signage requirements. Of the plan, um we do permit wayfinding signage uh to direct pedestrian vehicular circulation, that's that's the permission.
Okay, that that's fine then, I I just wanted to make sure that 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 internal illumination didn't trigger a deviation. Okay, so.
Clarification, it's not the sign itself. Cause wayfinding signs are permitted under the redevelopment plan, the only question is whether or not. Internal illumination is a deviation.
Yes, yeah, that's the question.
And and if it is, Mister Alap, I'm requesting that deviation.
Understood, I believe Mister Height testified that there is no requirement or prohibition on illumination.
As long as that's clear, thank you.
Okay, that uh concludes my questions, anybody else?
Nope.
All right, thank you, everybody.
We have nothing further at this time.
Okay, thank you, um why don't we take a uh ten-minute break at seven thirty? We'll be back at seven forty and uh we'll open it up for a public comment at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Steve, I still see your face.
I'm here.
You're the only one there, everybody click their camera, you're the only one.
Yeah, I'm reviewing elements of the application, so I said, uh rather than not get up, I had a pretty good snack before, when I came.
Snack, look at this snack.
I had uh some Mary's Gone crackers and some pistachio nuts, so yeah. And a uh.
Everything's good, the family's good, everything's good.
Better than good, I I am on Jersey City's planning board doing God's work, so yeah.
Yeah. You you put it in for the next meeting for the fourteenth, right?
Yeah, I'm in.
A lot of people, man, a lot of, hopefully we could catch up to make sure everybody. Gets their fair share because they paying a lot of people, paying their lawyers and coming back again, it's hard for them.
Well, you know, I mean, like, look at this application, right, uh we're already on it two hours, so.
Yep.
We may want to consider doing uh planning board meetings weekly. I hope I'm off the record.
Yeah, and you know what, I I asked for one time, like from five thirty to like, you know, do it from the daytime. The problem is that it's so many hours, it's like doing the whole thing, so we have to go from like ten in the morning or wait to ten at night.
I know, crazy. So. Anyway, how you doing?
Over here, listening carefully, listening to what everything says.
I just want to let you guys know you're on.
Yeah, we know.
Okay.
We didn't say nothing wrong.
No, no, I know, I know, just want to make sure you knew.
Yeah, we're we're one hundred percent on top of the game, we can hear everybody else, and we know, we hear it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so it's a lot of work. So it's three times this month and it should be okay. It's true, like you said, if we do it once a week, get everybody together, it'd be nice to, you know, that where everybody could get their fair hearing.
Yeah, it's a lot of work, lot to be done for Jersey City.
Yeah, I got some people on planning boards in other locations and other cities, they're done in an hour. It takes more time to get set up than do everything. Crazy.
Amazing, no, it's funny, I was looking at the uh the governor's budget for uh. School aid and how much Jersey City was reduced and the compared to Newark, which is the largest.
Uh so. All right, thank you, so we're back in order, uh at this time, let's open it up for a public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hands. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Mister Chair, seeing no public, I'm well, I.
Uh we do have, we do have a couple.
Okay.
Promoted Gene Daly.
Okay.
Hi, Gene, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you.
I'll just swear in, do you swear any testimony you give tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
For the record, can you state by your name and give us your home address, please?
Sure, my name is Gene Daly, it's spelled J A E A N N E uh D A L Y. And uh I live at one ten Sussex Street in Jersey City.
Thank you.
Miss Daly, good evening, uh you know our drill, we have three minutes for you.
Three minutes, yes, okay, um just stop me when you need to. Um I definitely share Commissioner Torres's concern about the balconies, um I can just totally see. Either a toddler dropping something, an adult accidentally dropping something over, as well as people put those um rail planters. Um on those uh edges. And if someone knocks something over, I do see that as an issue, but um aside from that, I have to say. This was quite a spectacular presentation, and I'm not one to give compliments. Easily on these type of high-rise buildings because I can't, I can't stand them personally, especially if seeing what has happened downtown. But I will state, I am pleasantly. Amazed by the presentation about the way the developer has met with the Morse Canal community. Has shifted ideas and made it more uh of a transparent um plan. Where the community can access it, it can cross between the two, you know, create a pathway between Berry Lane and Lafayette Park. It can, it sort of engages more the community by the way it's been repositioned and reshaped. And I I really think it's very spectacular, and again. I'm actually so impressed with this developer, I I really wish we have more of them like this. Because engaging with the community is so very important, and you can see that the efforts really paid off. It was a true collaboration versus just a one-sided deal, whereas, you know, I totally believe. Conflict seeks resolution, and I think the consideration the developer had for the needs of the Morse Canal community. Inspired me so much, I actually joined the the Morse Canal uh organization. I'm actually a new ne- new member, and it was because I was inspired by this developer and the engagements. And I I I will say, there are many people in Jersey City who want these type of community engagements to be. Dedicated via ordinance, I'm I'm involved in a different communities in Jersey City. And this is what they want, and we need this type of developer, not someone else, so I just have to say. I'm not crazy about the uh balcony design, but overall, I I I am really pleasantly pleased. Because the original um idea and plans. Uh I was totally against, especially because we're creating precedence, but I I I am happily amazed. And supremely positive, I know my ten, three minutes are probably up, but the thank you very much, and also thank you to all you commissioners. Who I know are spending a lot of time um doing this, and I I appreciate your efforts, so I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Daly, we appreciate it.
The chairman, is it possible to just talk about the railings for a second? We uh we had a conversation during the break and we take Commissioner Torres's concerns, and thank you for bringing it up, Gene. Take them seriously, we um we would like this uh offer that we would work with planning, uh Matt and and the team. We have some ideas, we think we can raise the glass, we think we can lower the opening on the bottom and we can. Maybe put a handrail on top that has not flat surface, so that there's nothing that could be placed on top of that railing like a can of soda or. A plastic cup, and uh we think that uh that those would be uh helpful measures to safeguard against any accidents on the balconies. And we would like to offer that in response to Commissioner Torres's concerns.
Mister Morchato, we appreciate it, I'm sure Commissioner Torres appreciates.
Yes, I I would I would like to say that I do appreciate that, um he's even so fast, took time to talk about it. Um and it's not that I have money, just balconies or the milk, um safety, you know, uh that's the. They did uh for developers and the people in the neighborhood, a- anybody, anybody, just.
Thank you.
And thank you, thank you for even um having a discussion.
Mooting Mrs. Carol Tyler, I'm sorry, Chairman.
That's okay, Matt, go ahead, I I actually was in, during comments, I was gonna suggest that that um, you know, maybe. Planning reaches out and and we come to some kind of an agreement on the balcony situation.
Hi, Carol, I just want to swear before you speak, okay, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name and give us your home address, please?
My name is Carol, C A R O L Tyler, T Y L E R. Home address, two four one Pacific Avenue.
Miss Tyler, good evening, we have three minutes for you.
Okay, well, you already know my name, I'm a member of the Board of uh Morris Canal Community Development Corporation. And while we initially sued to stop amendments to the Morris Canal uh redevelopment plan. That would facilitate this project and in fact propose our own zoning amendment to the planning board. That offered an alternative residential development vision, we withdrew our lawsuit. I come here tonight to voice the Morris Canal CDC support of the site plan before the planning board tonight. We do so since the plan is indicative of the type of change the developer has committed to 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 do. We met with the broader Morris Canal Lafayette community and its partners, which includes an architectural firm that led to. Led us to withdraw the lawsuit. The new plan before you is not only far more aesthetically pleasing than other previous renderings. But the plan depicts a project that will be better integrated with the community in several ways. The project will be accessible to the community, as been noted during this uh meeting. By providing direct access to Berry Lane Park from Communipaw Avenue. That includes substantial amounts of new public open space. The building, though the same height as originally goes, will minimally impact the homes around it. With reduced shadows on the neighborhood and the park, which is a significant reduction from previous designs. Finally, with the its new design, numerous community benefits, including recreational center. Retail space that will be available to minority-owned businesses and anticipated public events. To be coordinated with the Friends of Berry Lane Park. This project has the potential to be a regenerative regenerative asset to the community. We appreciate the developer's willingness to attend several meetings with the entire community and listening to their concerns. We look forward to seeing this project come to fruition with all of its community benefits. And I apologize, but I was reading, and I do sound as though I was reading, but. This, I needed to prepare this and look at the words as I was reciting them to you guys, thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Miss Tyler, we appreciate it. Okay, anybody else from public, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hands, if you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands.
Your chair seeing public, I move to close the public.
So I can.
Okay, motion is made and second, a public is closed, uh Matt, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh yeah, so um I just wanted to add a couple of comments, um first affirm that uh we agree with the planning testimony. With regards to the the variances and the proofs that they put on the record, uh in a memo we uh issued. Uh to the commissioners and uh shared with the applicant dated February second, uh twenty twenty-three, we uh recommended several conditions. Uh the majority of those are roughly about over half or or what you you consider are normal conditions. Um inclusive of um of of conditions we have to uh. Address the onsite affordable housing that is required here, and then there's several other conditions that are more specific to the site. Um now I just want to put on the record that the uh the neighborhood commercial facility. Um pursuant to an RDA could have subsidized rents. Um in addition, uh and with regards to some of these additional conditions, uh we speak to uh. The other community benefits that are particular to this zone, uh like like the recreation center. Fit out of the recreation center, um especially the the basketball court, which is supposed to be. In a operational as soon as the ribbons cut, um and the ongoing work that uh will be required. Um between the redevelopment and and the city to to make sure that the fit out is uh is approved. Uh in addition, um. Very, and with regards to the neighborhood commercial facility, uh we are asking for the the redevelopment to provide an annual compliance report. Um so that maybe can uh ensure that they're meeting uh some of those goals with regards to the minority women owned. Veteran business uh enterprises and and disadvantaged business enterprises. There is also. A condition to require that there's public access and conservation on those open spaces um in the form of easement agreements. Will be looking for them to work with us on those. We heard an additional uh uh condition that they offered up regarding the balcony design. Uh and lastly, I would just add, um if we could uh work together on the the brick sample or the brick being used for the recreation center. So that we can just ensure that it's reading, um it does read blue and not not too black or dark gray. Um like some of the images that I was seeing, um maybe through my computer. Um, that staff would recommend approval. You have any questions? I'm here.
All right. Thanks, Matt. Um, I have no, none. I just want to ask uh. Mr. Shaljan, do you have any objections to planning's comments? Could you uh, comply with their review letter?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, we acknowledge receipt of the February second. Uh, letter from planning and my client will comply with those conditions. There's one other item. Oh, uh, we had asked the board early on for the streetscape on Woodward. That that be approved as part of the, uh, part of the application.
I don't have a problem with it. Matt, do you have anything you want to add?
No, no, I don't have anything to add. I do want to just say that um. It, it escaped me for a moment there that, that this is combined with the subdivision application.
Yes.
And in that, we just provided a memo dated February third. And we had just two very simple conditions there. And would recommend approval regarding the subdivision as well. They also testified to the fact that they are going to be complying with the review agent comments they received. Um, and uh. Staff has no further comment there.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I agree on uh. On, on the applicant's uh cohesive look with the, the streetscape along with uh, you know. Keeping cohesive with uh, Berry Lane Park. Um, I don't have a problem with it. Does anybody else uh, want to chime in on it? Okay. All right. So if there's nothing else, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna go ahead and make two motions, correct? Separate ones?
Yes, two separate motions.
Make a motion to approve case P two two dash one four five. As presented to the board here tonight.
Second it. Okay, we have a motion made and seconded on the subdivision.
On a motion to approve, um, Vice Chairman Dr. Gonzalez.
I.
Commissioner Cruz.
I.
Commissioner Lipsky.
I.
Commissioner Torres.
I.
And Chairman Langston.
I.
Motion carries on in favor. Motion approved for the subdivision.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two two dash one four six as presented to the board tonight.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded uh, for the site plan.
Yeah, a motion approved with conditions uh, Vice Chairman Dr. Gonzalez.
Yeah, I, I want to applaud the uh, everyone, the team. They, this was a, a really good succinct presentation. It was complete. It was. Um, enlightening. Um, we, uh, you left very little question for Chairman to, and not have any questions is rare. Uh, um, I really like it. I actually like it a lot. I like the look. I think that this is going to be. A, a really good thing for the community and the variances thought I think uh, didn't pose a very. Uh, substantial detriment. So I, I have been to Distillery District in Toronto, actually. And it's one of my favorite places when I'm, when I'm there. And um, you know, this does have that look to me. Um. So uh, I'm, I'm very happy with this presentation and with this project. I vote I.
Commissioner Cruz.
I.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Yeah, I absolutely uh, love it. I think that the process unfolded brilliantly. Um, I think that the uh. Variance warranted in the seventy-five foot minimum setback from Berry Lane. Is clearly offset with the uh, right of way on the Berry Park North with the sixty foot wide. Uh, walkway, which I think is going to be brilliant, is going to allow for. Access for parking. And then when you take into uh, consideration that. Between the rec center and the open space, that's just about an acre. Of, think about that in a city that's fourteen point seven uh, square miles, an acre being feeded back to the city. And the owner will maintain the open space. It's not. Uh, usually characteristic of applications. Uh, I commend the Morris Canal Group, uh, Ms. Tyler coming on. Even with her uh, notes she read repeatedly and uh. Affirmed the greatness of this. I love the look of it. And then also like Dr. Gonzalez said, uh, I recently have gone to the Reading Terminal Market. In Philadelphia and which is a historic uh, place where you can go in and. Eat your heart out. So I just hope when this thing opens up, uh. I, uh, I'll still have my length and discipline and be able to walk through and not uh, put on too many pounds. So I wholeheartedly vote I.
Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Torres.
Um, yeah, it doesn't surprise me this presentation too much because uh. Every time this group was setting over there for that area, it was um. To me, it was impressive. It was something that was nice. It was that. Uh, fit, and then they kept approving it in the last three years and approving it. Um. It's a beautiful setting, beautiful uh, design. Um, I wish it becomes one of those things that people from other countries and other places say when they come to Jersey City, they want to go over there. Um, and walk to that park and hang out in that park and uh, or in that area. That would be awesome to say, to hear that one day, say somebody wants to go. And. Stay in that certain area and. Um. It never had. A quick response on a request. As they did today. Um, but yes, please talk to planning about balconies. Um, it's only a safety matter. That's all. Just the safety. I bring it up. And I will be bringing this up to any developer. The future who has the same situation. If you matter, with that, I do vote a very, very big eye for this project.
Chairman Langston.
Um, so let me just address the uh, deviations first of all. Uh, I think they're well within right. Um, I don't think there's any detriment to the zone plan, to the master plan. Um. Aside from that, a- and also the um. You know, the, the second, I think it was called two A or something, the, the parking level. Um. If, if it wasn't discussed in this meeting, nobody would know that there was an extra story in there. It's. I hate to even call it an extra story. So um, I think the. You know, I agree with Mr. Height's testimony. I think uh, everything is pretty de minimis on. Especially for a project to this size. Um. Uh. This is a long time coming. Uh, you know, we've heard this. A few times now. Um, I thought it was a great project when I first saw it. I think it's an even better project now. Um, I, I especially like the um. You know, the care the. The applicant took to uh. You know, give a nod to the industrial past of the neighborhood. Um. Uh, I, I love a sawtooth roof. I, I think that's so cool. And um. Uh, you know, besides. The, the small business incubators for uh, minority women veteran owned businesses. I, I think that's dynamite. Um, I said it last time when we heard the redevelopment plan. I'll say it again. I, I think that's a game changer. Um. And, you know, I do appreciate the uh. The communication between the applicant and the community. And I think it's a much better project for it. It's beautifully landscaped. Uh, I appreciate the uh, you know, the bio swell and the. The permeable pavers. I, I think those things are often overlooked, but uh. They really round this whole thing out. It's an ambitious project and um. Congratulations. Uh, I vote I and anybody that knows me knows I'll be over there. Sample on every single one of those food markets. And I can't wait. I can't wait.
I'll be joining you, Chairman.
You're gonna have to ride a bike there, Steve. I'm not gonna run.
There you go. That's what I was gonna say. Still be on your bike.
Animal space for parking. Thank God.
My client would like to address the board just for a moment.
And I'll take a couple of seconds. Uh, I just wanted to say, you know, it's been a long, hard road. Uh, it was about three years and nine months ago that. I walked into Chris Fiori's office and said. You think there's any chance we could change this from industrial to residential and mixed use? And um, you're all familiar with the road I, I traveled along the way. Uh, it's amazing tonight to hear the Mars Canal Group stand up in favor of the project. Uh, I can't tell you what it means to me personally. And we truly look forward to building this thing out and becoming part of the community. Um, I have to. I, I don't know even how to thank all of you. Who have been involved in this for the last couple of years. Matt and, and Tanya and, and Chris and, and you know. You guys have really stuck by a project that you believed uh, was worthy. And uh, tonight is really the culmination of all of that and uh. Uh, me and the entire team really look forward to getting started on this and uh. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it, Mr. Mont. And uh, yeah, knowing your other work, you know, I'm sure we're gonna pull this off. It's gonna look good.
Good job and congratulations to you and the team. Excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Thank you, guys. Uh, unfortunately, that's not the end of our night. Let's uh, move on to item eleven. And I don't even want to discuss. I, I just walked in and heard David talking about ten to ten. That, that's. Bananas. But uh, let's move on to item eleven. It's case P two three dash zero two nine. Is the review and discussion of an amendment to the Liberty Harbor North redevelopment plan regarding one fifty-five Maron Boulevard. Uh, the change in use and permitted height that's proposed. This has been petitioned by Liberty Harbor North Partners LLC. And formal action may be taken tonight.
Voting uh, Mr. Frank Regan. Mr. Regan, I see you. You have the floor.
You're muted, Mr. Regan.
That.
There you go.
Good evening, Matt. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. That's a tough act to follow. It's a phenomenal project. Um, we're here this evening with regards to, as the chairman mentioned, the proposed amendment to Liberty Harbor. Liberty Harbor North redevelopment plan. We represent Liberty Harbor North Partners LLC, the contract purchaser of the property. Um. We have been working with um, the city, the J C R A. Uh, for a number of months uh, on this. Uh, these proposed amendments. We have this, which we understand are acceptable to both those parties. Uh, if the amendment's adopted. Uh, it will result in the settlement of J C R A litigation with the current property owner and allow the property. Uh, to be redeveloped. Uh, the applicant would be entering into a redevelopment agreement with the J C R A. Uh, and understands that development of property would be subject to the city's I Z O. Uh, we do have our planner here this evening uh, for a brief presentation, if that's your desire. Uh, to go just explain the, the proposed amendments uh, to the application. Uh, I'm sorry, to the redevelopment plan. Uh, that'd be John McDonough. Matt.
Promoting John, one moment.
Mr. Chairman.
I was just gonna get to you, Mr. McCann. Um. Mr. Regan, if it's okay, uh, I do believe we have Mr. McCann here as an objecting attorney. Uh, Mr. McCann, if you want to put your appearance on the record, please.
Thank you, uh, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners, Staff and Counsel. Uh, my name is Jim McCann from the law firm of Connell Foley in Jersey City. I'm here tonight on behalf of L H N. Roman numeral two LLC and L H N Owner Urban Renewal LLC. Um. Those entities are the owners of the Vantage One and Vantage Two projects located in block. One five nine oh seven lot three. Um, qualifiers, C zero one point one, uh, one point zero one and C zero one point zero two. Um, those properties are directly adjacent to the property that's the subject of this application. One property is located on the east of this site and the other property is located on the west of the site. And in fact, those properties wrap around this site. Um. Those entities were the designated redeveloper of this, of eighty-five percent of the block that this site is on. Um, it took about ten years to develop both parts of this project. The Vantage project and my client developed. Uh, almost all of the infrastructure around it or widened it or improved it. Uh, streets were built out, utilities, uh, waterfront walkway, bulkheads rebuilt. Uh, they have a vested interest in this site and um, they are certainly a stakeholder. Um, I. Uh, have been the subject of a disqualification. Uh, claim by the principal of L H N Partners LLC. Um, and what that means exactly is. Uh, the, one of the principles of the applicant in this matter or the petitioner has claimed that Connell Foley cannot. Represent L H N two and L H N owner in this matter. Because the principal, the company of the principal is represented by another partner. At Connell Foley in another project. Um, in Newark. Uh, this principal has repeatedly raised uh, this disqualification claim. Um, and as a result. Um, Connell Foley is going to withdraw from this case. Um, but under the rules of professional conduct, I have an obligation, since my client will be unrepresented at this. Hearing, if I do not bring this to the board's attention. I have an obligation to ask for, to take reasonable measures to protect my client's interest. So I'm asking this board to adjourn this hearing for a period of thirty days. Uh, to give my client the ability to get replacement counsel. Um. And determine what objection, if any, it should make to this amendment.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, are you done, Mr. McCann? I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm done for now. Yes. Right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I just. Um, if I just might respond. Um, ob- obviously, I, Mr. McCann represents that his client has a vested interest and they may, as a result of their ownership of the adjoining property owners. But my client is the contract purchaser of this piece. Uh, they're the ones that made the request. Uh, to the city and the planning board for uh, this amendment. Obviously, that's why we're before you this evening. Um, we made that request back in January uh, of this year. The council authorized um. The preparation of these amendments by the adoption of the resolution at the end of January. Uh, we submitted detailed amendments uh, to planning uh, February third. We were actually scheduled uh, before the planning board to discuss and present this amendment two weeks ago. And unfortunately got carried uh, to this evening. My client is under contractual deadlines uh, with respect to its acquisition of the property. Um, and its failure to obtain the amended approvals, I'm sorry, the amended redevelopment plan. Uh, which obviously is still subject to the city council uh, approval. Um, you know, would result in potential damages to my client and it objects to. You know, an adjournment of this matter um, uh, to any date in the future. Um, this amendment is before the board for its review and recommendation to the council. Uh, as I indicated, the council ultimately would be the party that would determine whether this amendment should be adopted or not. And Mr. McCann's clients would have the opportunity to appear at the planning board, I'm sorry, at the council. Um, if that ordinance was introduced and, and ultimately up for a public hearing and adoption. And obviously, if, if it was ultimately adopted, they'd have the right to, to challenge that approval. So I don't see that they're harmed in any way um, with respect to trying to preserve their rights. And ultimately. You know, they don't have a contract to acquire this property. My understanding. Uh, and this is just based on conversations I had with the attorney for the current property owner. Is that Mr. McCann's um, clients had reached out for the current owner. Um, back in the middle of February, expressing their um, disappointment that they weren't given the opportunity to acquire this property. Um, so I, we, we view this as just uh, as a delay tactic and a way for. Um, you know, the deal to potentially be killed. So we asked the board to proceed uh, with, with its hearing this evening uh, so that the application, the amendment can move forward.
May, Mr. Regan, are you done?
I am.
Um, may I address the board again? May I address the board again, Mister Chairman?
Sure, and then I think we'll weigh in after that.
So, you know, it may be that. The applicant and the J C R A and the planning department have been working on this amendment for many months, I don't know that. The reason I don't know that is because. The unwritten policy that I've always been subject to when I've represented anybody. Seeking an amendment to a redevelopment plan and the custom and practice has been that the stakeholder be involved. In the process of drafting the redevelopment plan amendments. My client has never received contact from the J C R A. The planning division. Or Mister Reagan's client or Mister Reagan. I'm not really sure, it may be that somebody called. The seller of the property, but it wasn't anybody that I'm dealing with on behalf of my client. My client is JP Morgan, they own one hundred percent of both of these projects at this point. They've not been included in this process at all, and I find that odd. Because almost everything else I've done in twenty years, there's always been an open policy at the planning division. To include and certainly everybody on, most of the people on this board and everybody in the planning division. Know how to reach me and I think it's well known that I've been Vantage's attorney for about ten years now. So. To say that this has been going on for months maybe, but my client's only known about it and discovered it just fortuitously. I discovered it at the last planning board hearing when I noticed that this matter was listed in front of one of my cases. And the next thing I would say is I, it seems incredulous to me and quite unfair. For Mister Reagan's client to raise a conflict of interest, attempt to muzzle Connell Foley from representing. The L H N one and L H N owner here and then insist that they proceed. With a hearing, the last thing that I'll say is, again, in twenty years, I've never seen. A. The Planning Board Act because a developer had a contract obligation to move forward. With a piece of property, I've done a lot of development in Jersey City and never has the planning board ever said, oh, well, we'll hear this tonight because. You have a contractual obligation developer, that seems unheard of to me. And I do remember at the last hearing, I was watching and Mister Reagan indicated that his client was in due diligence. Due diligence is usually a time period where a developer can investigate the problems or situations at the property. And then if it doesn't like to go, doesn't wanna go forward, cancel the contract, so. I mean, I don't know if Mister, if Mister Reagan's client has a binding contract or not, I don't think it should matter in this case. They can get an extension, if they signed a contract giving them. A month to get a redevelopment plan amendment, that would be a burden on them. And this board should not take it into consideration in this matter.
Mister Chairman, just, I'll be very brief, I, you know, I don't know who Mister McCann represents, I can't, you know, know that he represents JP Morgan. He reached out for me last week and inquired as to. Who the principals were in our, in Liberty Harbor North Partners, that was the first I heard from. My understanding is that there have been attempts to communicate with his client prior to last week. All of that being said. We're telling you, you know, that our client is under tight time constraints. Mister McCann doesn't know the particulars of the contract as he indicated, and whether or not we can get extensions or not. And lastly, there are other interests at play here, as I indicated, we've been, we've been working with the J C R A who's currently in litigation with the property owner. And ultimately, this, that litigation would be settled if this project was to go forward, so I'll leave it at that, Mister Chairman.
Mister Chairman, just one more, just one more thing, I, I mean, whatever litigation has been going on at the J C R A, they didn't. They did not give the courtesy of calling my client or me and letting us know that this application was pending. The litigation is again irrelevant to the merits of whether this redevelopment plan amendment. Should be recommended by this board, and again. I've been told, I've been instructed by the Dakota's firm that I cannot advocate for my client in this matter. I don't see how this matter can go forward. When I cannot participate in the hearing and my client cannot participate in the hearing, they will hire replacement counsel, but. They haven't been able to do it yet.
We didn't advise, we, I mean, Mister Chairman, I mean, we didn't advise Mister McCann that he, he has a conflict. We raised the issue and that's for him to determine whether he has a conflict or not, and I guess we haven't been effective in muzzling Mister McCann on behalf of his client. So I'll leave it at that.
They, I was instructed by Mister Dakota's not to take any action adverse. To the applicant. And I haven't, except for asking for this adjournment.
Thank you, Mister McCann.
Thank you.
Chairman, I've heard enough argument on the matter.
I'm sorry, Santo, that was you speaking, I didn't see who was speaking.
That was me speaking, Chairman.
Okay, gotcha, it sounded like you. I. While I understand Mister McCann's concerns for his client. I think these would be better pursued at the city council level, I think we're just here to. As an advisory to city council and give our recommendation with the. Compliance with the master plan. And Santo, if I'm at a line here, you know, please put me back in line.
Also, I allowed both Mister Reagan and Mister McCann to lay out their position. Articulate what their positions were. There are several things that make no difference to this board and both council are correct about that. I don't particularly get involved in, nor does this board get involved in. Contractual rights and obligations, conflicts of interest, that, that's nothing for us to involve ourselves with. The matter's been listed on the agenda, it was carried to tonight from a previous hearing. If council has a conflict, that's on council to decide regardless of what anybody else. Feels or says about whether or not there is a conflict, that is. To the attorney and firms, not for others to determine. Be all that as it may. This board is. Ready to hear the case as listed. I am sure. JP Morgan Chase has more than one attorney, although Mister McCann may want to believe he's their only attorney, I am sure. They have hundreds of thousands of attorneys. That represent them, so. We're here and Chairman, if the board is ready to proceed. Again, it is for an amendment to a redevelopment plan for consistency with the master plan. That then goes to the legislative body, the governing body, to take action, so. With that, Chairman, if the board is prepared to proceed.
May I put one more, one more statement?
I'm actually still talking, Mister McCann.
I apologize, Council.
So with that, Chairman, I believe that. The call is up to the board if they want to proceed and as far as any additional comments by Mister McCann. Mister McCann's either participating or not participating, I don't know how much more he's gonna talk on behalf of somebody that he's not representing in the matter, so. I'll leave that to you, Chairman.
Alright, thank you, Council, and, and just to, to address Mister McCann's statement before. It's none of this board's business if there's a contractual obligation that's pending. This is in front of us tonight, it's legally in front of us tonight. And we're tasked with giving a recommendation to city council, so that's what we're gonna do and. I'm fully prepared to proceed, Mister McCann, if you want to address one more time. I'll allow it. We're gonna move on this item tonight.
Thank you, just to put on the record, the place where the merits of a redevelopment plan should be determined is at this board. The city council does not take testimony under oath, they don't really take expert testimony. It's this board. Understand it's a recommendation, but this is generally where this happens. And it should happen here and I'm not gonna participate because. What happens, whether the board is sympathetic or not, is. Connell Foley will be subject to an ethics complaint if I do anything more than ask for this adjournment. And that's not something that is fair, equitable to my client and it's also completely unfair and equitable to my client. They do not have hundreds of thousands of attorneys and that this conflict claim was discovered on March first. Because when L H N submitted their application, it's, it's a letter application, it doesn't say who the principals of the company are. So there was no way of knowing at the time that there was a conflict, when it was discovered. We acted on it as quickly as we could and JP Morgan was not able to get. Another attorney prior to tonight. So they are unrepresented, L H N and L H N two are unrepresented at this hearing. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mister McCann. Alright, Mister Reagan, if you'd like to call your witness.
For John McDonough.
Hi John, do you just want to testify tonight, it's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you state in spite your name, please?
Sure, hi there everyone, my name is John McDonough and it's spelled just like it is on the screen, M C capital D O N O U G H.
Thank you.
Mister McDonough, good evening, we've qualified you in the past, your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is, Mister Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir, you are qualified.
Mister McDonough, if you could just describe the proposed amendments to the redevelopment plan.
Sure thing, I think we'll start off, Mister Chairman, with your permission. Legalities aside from what the applicant is proposing here makes perfect sense from a pure physical planning standpoint. You're going to see this is an infill development on a very small portion of the Liberty Harbor, Liberty Harbor North redevelopment plan. Which we know is an eighty-four acre plan, this equates to about approximately one-third of that plan, so we're talking about a very small portion here. And I'm just gonna show you a visual of what we're talking about. And as we know, the Liberty Harbor North redevelopment plan is just east of the Morris Canal Plan. Which you just heard Dean Morchetto and his team and the folks over at Dresner Robbin talk about, an absolutely beautiful project. Well, here in Liberty Harbor North, we're seeing that positive transformation as well. The subject lot, approximately one-third, is actually a part of a larger lot.
I do have to interrupt you one second, sir, council, we do need to mark this.
Oh, yep, yes, you should mark this as A one. This, I guess it's a five, it's a five. A five slide presentation.
Yes, it is, Frank, it's again, just going to be some aerial drone photos of the subject property from various vantage's. And I think we end it with a little top-down view as well, just to get a sense of the, the physical layout of the site itself, but really, it's this. This void that you see here, it's this patch which this site is part of a larger lot, which is an entire city block. That does overlook the Marina, this would be looking to the north, so the basin would be immediately in the foreground. New York City would be to the right from this particular vantage point. Again, we're looking at what is identified on your tax rolls as block one five nine zero seven, lot number three. And it has transformed with beautiful redevelopment, as you can see here, with two forty-five story towers. And other buildings and other amenities as well, and this is sort of to, to complete the puzzle, if you will, to complete this. Redevelopment of, of this city block. Now, the site is bound by four streets, bound by streets on all side, we've got Marin Boulevard. We've got South Cove, South Peter Street, and we've got Park Avenue as well. And also, in the foreground here, the site overlooks the Tidewater Basin District, which mandates thirty-story buildings. So we've got forty-five story buildings overlooking this site, we've got thirty-story buildings, what would be from your vantage point in this particular view. And again, just to sort of spin you around, frame number two of exhibit A one, we're now looking to the west. You get a sense of the towers, the Tidewater Basin District, which would be to your left, we've got the void in the middle, which is the subject area. Spinning around the other direction, looking to the east, frame number three, again, you get a sense of the void. The towers and this district to the right, which again is targeted for or contemplated for thirty-story towers. And then finally, last view, looking to the south, again, you get a sense of the, the opposite view with the first view that I showed you. This is going to be an infill development in, in that void that you see in between the two towers and. Again, this is just a, a top-down view that we've got a site here that is a blank sheet of paper, ready to accept the development, that's before you. With that, I will stop sharing, I'm gonna take you now to the redevelopment plan itself. And the proposal before you, it involves about five sheets in the redevelopment plan that need to be changed. Including the cover sheet, which obviously has been amended a number of times, this would be another ordinance amendment. And we'll come back to this second sheet, which. I'll explain what that changes, but just to give you a little graphic here, again, the subject site that we're talking about is this site with this little box on it. Which you can see in the legend is a required hotel, the. The petition here is to delete the retired hotel graphic, which has never manifested on this site. Since two thousand and one, when the original redevelopment plan was manifested, so twenty-plus years. And an opportunity here to revitalize and infill this stagnant site with multifamily residential development. So again, what the petitioner and the change here is a request for a use change from a required hotel. To multifamily residential, which is certainly compatible with the residential development in, in the area as well. As an infill development, this is also looking for compatibility from a mass and form and development scale with. Those two forty-five story tower buildings that we see, flanking the subject site. And also over on block twenty-five, we're looking at those thirty-story towers, so this is sort of the hole in the donut. The change is to take what is now contemplated as a sixteen-story tower. An L-class building, but with the height allowances that are, I'll say the exaggerated height allowances that are allowed for stories for a. Hotel use would be the equivalent of a building of approximately three hundred and twenty-five feet. The proposal here is for a change to building class to X L building type, which is thirty-two stories. Which would also equate to an overall mass of approximately three hundred and twenty-five stories, so. Not with, notwithstanding the change in use and withstanding the change in the building type or the building class. The overall mass and scale of what's proposed here is on par with what would be contemplated in, in the zone scheme. What does that do, other than the graphic change here on the regulating plan in terms of heights? There are some tables as well that all relate to section twenty-four or block number twenty-four. The change from resident, from hotel to residential triggers allowances, and we've gone through the math here. Run them past your, your city staff in terms of what those changes would be. Again, the footnote on this page deletes the requirement for a hotel on the subject site. And likewise, that carries over to the intensity summary as well, so. In short, the proposal is to put a three hundred and twenty-five foot high building in an area that's already contemplated for a potentially three hundred and twenty-five foot building. On a site that's a void and is certainly not contributing to the redevelopment area in its, in its current context. The, these changes, these changes in numbers and text here and graphics will effectuate what we believe are the goals. And purposes of the redevelopment plan, certainly have a vibrant district here in the Liberty Harbor North section of the city. And again, just to remind the board, as I said. What you have now is a vacant site. And proposal is again to infill that vacant site with a beautiful building. That will be complimentary to that which is around it. With that, Mister Chairman, that's my. comment sense approach to the application here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McDonough. Um, Mr. Regan, anything for your witness before we uh, question?
No.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, Mr. McDonough, this doesn't, this change doesn't remove hotels as a permitted use in that redevelopment plan, correct?
That is one hundred percent correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, that's my only question. Uh, anybody else? Any questions?
I have nothing further, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I, I do have representatives of the applicant, but I don't think it's necessary to, to bring them in.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Just I, I just want to uh, be clear on that. So um, the plan at one time had residential housing on that area. And it was changed to a hotel, uh, change, but it doesn't take that component out of the redevelopment plan at all. That's, that's what I'm understanding.
That, that is correct, Commissioner, as the, the chair just
Okay, alright, so basically, it's the same, just a different location of certain areas.
That's
In the future, somebody wanted to do. Okay, thank you very much.
So Chairman, I would just ask that Mr. McDonough go a little bit into the goals and objectives, because if I'm understanding it, hotel was required and that's being removed.
Yes.
So, Mr. McDonough, if you could just expand upon uh, the goals and objectives of the plan and how the removal of the hotel requirement uh, would not affect those goals and objectives.
Sure thing, Counselor. So the, the heart of the redevelopment plan is to revitalize the district and to reverse stagnation. It's at the heart of any redevelopment plan. Um, we have an, a petitioner here that is ready, willing and able to redevelop this site with a high-quality building. Uh, that will be complimentary to those around it. And as I said, compatible in mass and scale to what's already contemplated there. The change in use does not foreclose the ability to get a hotel in the greater eighty-four acre district. But here, um, it has not manifested in all this time. So we think that this is clearly on point with the heart of the redevelopment plan uh, to reverse stagnation, revitalize this vacant site. Um, the redevelopment plan does emphasize attractive buildings at the Marina. And that's exactly what the uh, change here will uh, enable and uh, and allow. So again, in the interest of aesthetics, uh, functionally reversing stagnation, we think that those core purposes of the redevelopment plan are being advanced.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McDonough. Um, Liz, do you want to uh, present any testimony before we go to public? Uh, we can't hear you. I think you're unmuted, but we can't hear you.
How about now?
We got you.
Okay, I hit a button. Um, just wanted to note that um, any residential development on this block and lot um, is subject to chapter one eighty-seven and one eighty-eight, uh, should residential use be proposed. It was alluded to before. I just wanted to let you know, we have it in writing um, in the proposed amendments. Um, and then, let's see. Um, to that point, um, one of the land use principles identified in the land use element of the master plan is to ensure the city's housing supply is balanced and meets the needs of all current and future city residents. The proposed amendments will result in the creation of affordable housing if residential use is proposed on this on block fifteen, nine, oh, seven, lot three qualifier C zero, 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 two. Uh, should any residential use be proposed, uh, it would be subject to uh, chapters one eighty-seven and one eighty-eight. Um, additionally, the master plan identifies the importance of a fifteen-minute city. One of the land use principles identified in the master plan is to make the city more transit-friendly, walkable, less reliant on the car. The Liberty Harbor North redevelopment plan identifies an objective to create a self-sufficient and vital neighborhood that makes it, that makes the most of its waterfront location and excellent transit service. Uh, the proposed amendments are consistent with the master plan and the redevelopment plan with the goal of creating housing that is well-connected in a self-sufficient neighborhood. That's my testimony.
Okay, thanks, Liz. Um, anybody, any questions before we go to public?
No.
Okay, thank you. Uh, if anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're coming in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. There's a couple of hands raised already.
Promoted Morris Canal.
Not sure they were promoted.
Yeah, it's taking a minute. Morris Canal, um, hmm. Well, we got Gene.
Okay, let's move on with Staley and uh, work on Morris Canal.
Unmute. Start video.
Hi, G. And you'll just confirm, sorry, Chris, that you'll, that you're still under oath from before?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
All right, Miss Staley, we have three minutes for you.
Okay, okay. I, I'm new to this, this project, but certain things raise red flags. The question is, is this, this, is this the same developer who developed the um, other buildings around it? Is this a different developer?
Yes, it would be a different developer.
Okay, it was that, like, for example, was that recent parcel just kind of separated out from the um, surrounding development? Or was it initially part of it? Because if, if it was originally supposed to be a hotel, obviously there were some type of leeway or grants, granting of, I don't know, variances to make it a hotel. So I'm under, I, I don't understand how it went, how it was designated as a hotel in the first place. Can someone explain that to me?
Miss Staley, that's what the plan, the plan is twenty years old, so back
I understand.
Okay, so then yes, in the plan, it was contemplated to be a hotel.
Okay, okay, thank you very much. Um, I guess my, my question, okay, that, that satisfies a lot for me because I also see that some, um, I, I thought it was part of the same development, meaning that the developer him or herself decided not to ve- to develop that. And wait, let, let's wait till time passes and then look for a uh, different designation of that area. So I appreciate your help with that. That explains a lot to me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you, Miss Staley. We appreciate it. Cam, do we have Morris Canal yet?
Uh, they're, they're not coming up, so either they don't see the promotion button or it's an accident, but um, I can't seem to get them to come up.
Um, Chairman, uh, I was uh, looking at the um, exhibit that Mr. McDonough brought up. And it's, it's actually an older version of what we had, uh, what we have posted on the portal. Um, so I'm just gonna share my screen quickly. Um, so what you all have to your, ooh. Okay, can you see the redevelopment plan on my screen?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So yeah, this was the, the package that you had. So um, John just shared a, an older version of it. So the, the only point that I just want to bring out is that um, he had shown a version that struck out um, footnote six. And then this version, that the version you have before you has a footnote six. So some of that was about um, the um, requirements of the I Z O and then some of that of the new uh, footnote six is about um, settlement and, and litigation regarding this site. Uh, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
So Chairman, for purposes of the record, we're gonna mark as A two, the one that Mr. McDonough had shared. And A three is the proper version with the footnote identifying the I Z O and the uh, litigation as notated in the exhibit.
Okay, thank you.
And the applicant is aware of that and, and agrees obviously to that, that language.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everyone.
All right, you got it. Uh, okay, so we're still in public comment. Uh, Morris Canal still has their hand up.
It's declined three times to be promoted. I'm assuming it's a mistake.
Okay, um, if whoever that is, if you made a mistake raising your hand, please, if you could drop your hand. Um, I, I always, you know, I want to make sure everybody's heard that wants to be heard. Um, but if we can't promote you, if you're not.
There you go.
Okay, we got.
Well,
Being no other members.
There, we have them coming up, I think, Commissioner.
Okay. Yeah, sorry.
No, I, I just unmuted them in the audience, but they keep declining. So I, this must be some mistake on their end. So I'm, I'm disabling talking. And lower
That being the case, Chairman, I would like to make a motion, uh, seeing no members of the public wishing this to speak further to end the public portion.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Public is closed. Uh, Liv, Liz, we have your recommendation?
Yes.
Uh, so if there's nothing further from the board, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept and approve uh, as presented to the board here tonight, uh, case P two, three dash zero, two, nine. The review and discussion of an amendment to the Liberty Harbor North redevelopment plan regarding one fifty-five Marin Boulevard, uh, change in use and permitted height proposed. And to forward this to a city council for formal adoption with favorable recommendation.
Back it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for favorable uh, recommendation to city council.
Okay, uh, we'll start the vote. Uh, Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez.
I am gonna vote aye.
Chair, um, Commissioner Lipsky.
Yeah, uh, Jim McCann said talented enough, but again, and uh, this is, this is, you know, uh, we only heard the change of use from hotel to residential. So, um, you know, it's gonna go before the city council and they'll opine as they so see uh, necessary. So I vote in the affirmative.
Uh, Commissioner Cruz.
I vote aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes, I feel that, um, it's, it's, it's in line with the plan. It's in line with the, maybe it's been done, um, and amendments have come before any of time, so. Uh, because the city council, uh, if this could be moved forward, I vote aye.
Okay, and Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think the changes are in line with the master plan. Um, it does give a varied housing stock for the neighborhood, uh, triggers the I Z O, so there's affordable housing attached. Uh, as far as the um, proposed density, I, I think once again, it's in line with the master plan. Uh, given that, you know, it's in, within walking distance of a light rail stop. It, it's also got a, a ferry stop uh, down the other end of the street. So it certainly uh, complies with the uh, walkable neighborhood concept that's contemplated in the master plan. Um, I want to steal uh, Mr. McDonough's uh, quote that it's uh, compatible in size and, I'm sorry, mass and scale as uh, neighboring properties and um, uh, you know, I, I've heard this plan in many forms uh, over the years. I can't remember the first time that we heard it. Um, but I'm probably going back, Mr. Regan, maybe eight years, something like that. And uh, you know, tonight didn't surprise me at all. Uh, I think every step of this has been contentious between uh, the applicant and uh, their neighbor, being that they're on the same uh, same block there. But um, I, I think as far as our concerns, uh, I think our concerns are met. And I think the changes are uh, definitely within the master plan. So I'm gonna vote aye for a uh, a recommendation to city council to pass this.
Okay, motion carries all in favor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Of the board, have a good evening.
Thank you, Counselor, you too. Um, Mike, it's eight forty-eight. Do you want to get a five-minute break in now and uh, just roll through the rest of the night?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I think that'll work.
Okay, so uh, let's come back at uh,
Three.
Eight fifty-three, everybody.
Advocate, advocate.
Abacus.
All right, could we come to order again, everybody? All right, so let's move on to item twelve. This case P two-two dash two-one-seven is a preliminary and final major site plan amendment with C variances and an interim use for one fifty-one Yale Avenue.
Good evening, Chairman.
Council, yeah.
Commissioners and staff and council, good evening again. Uh, my name is Jim McCann from the law firm of Connell Foley. Here on behalf of one hundred Water Street Phase Two LLC. Um, uh, this project is, uh, on property, uh, at one fifty-one Yale Avenue, block two zero seven zero four lots one and two and block two zero seven zero one lots four and five in the Water Street redevelopment plan area. Counsel, this is a notice case. Um, would appreciate.
Right here, counsel.
Uh, I'm sorry, Counsel, I didn't hear you.
Is that paper, Santa? What is that?
This is Mr. McCann's notice.
Very thorough job.
Wants to make sure everybody gets it.
So while counsel is doing that, maybe I should, um, Cameron, have you been able to find my experts? I have, um, Stuart Johnson. I have Ed Colling. And I have Jesse Coakley. Um, those are my three primary witnesses. If you could promote them all, if you haven't already, I would appreciate it.
It got Stuart, got Ed. Um, I believe we have everyone.
Okay.
So Chairman, I have received the affidavit of publication proof of mailing with respect to the application at one five one dash one six five Yale Ave, six fifty Route four-fourth and four forty here in the city. This was noticed for the February seventh meeting date and carried through to this evening. We're going to mark it as A one for purposes of the record.
Okay, thank you, counsel.
So, um, Chairman and board members, I think most of you are probably familiar with this site. Um, it's near Route four forty, um, could, uh, Stuart, could you put up the, um, the first graphic? Uh, this project was originally approved in two thousand seventeen as a three-phase project. Um, what you see right there wi- i- inside the yellow, uh, box, I believe you've seen it many times. Commissioners, that is the entire property. Um, this was approved in two thousand seventeen as a three-phase project. Uh, there, there was a prelim- a preliminary and final subdivision granted which provided for the streets and the infrastructure. Um, there was a final site plan granted for phase one and a preliminary site plan granted for phases two and three. Um, the status of the project as of the present date is phase one has been completed. Uh, all of the street infrastructure has been completed, um, s- most of the sidewalks. Um, and also as part of phase one, uh, an interim parking lot was approved on the site on the phase two site. So what you are going to see tonight from, from my experts is uh, an application for an amended preliminary and final site plan on the phase two component of the project with an interim, uh, parking, uh, a- approval request to kind of relocate the interim parking lot from the, what's from the phase two site to the phase three site. And, uh, and Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to remind you for housekeeping, I'm going to ask for an interim use approval for three years for the, for the new interim parking lot. Um, and I think you'll understand that a little bit more when I, when I, my experts provide a graphic. Um, so basically the relief request that is an, uh, amended preliminary and final site plan approval. Um, there are three relatively minor deviations. Uh, the, the prod- this phase two is building, uh, a parking deck for, for the entire project. Phase one, two, and three. So the parking garage is going to exceed the maximum required, uh, allowable parking for phase one and two, but when phase three is built, it will meet the requirements of the redevelopment plan. So I think that's a deviation that this board has given and can give. Uh, because it's really a temporary deviation. There's a minor side yard setback and there's a dri- drive aisle with deviation. Um, and having said that, I'm going to call my first witness, uh, who's the project architect. Um, he, Mr. Stuart Johnson from Minno and Wasco. He's been involved in the project since two thousand seventeen. I'm going to let him take it from, from here, um, once he's sworn in and.
Okay, thank you, counsel. And, uh, Kim, we do see, uh, Jesse Coakley is, uh, has a hand raised. That's part of, uh, Mr. McCann's team.
Yes, he is.
And Mr. McCann, I'll just ask, we're up to A two is the next exhibit. So as they come up, anything not submitted, we can mark. And, uh, if it's all one slideshow or something like that, we can mark it as one. Just tell us date, number of pages, exhibit, et cetera, and then submit it after the year.
Absolutely. Uh, I think you're going to see one slideshow, which is a combination of some graphics, some renderings and some filed plans with maybe some additional notations on them, uh, commissioners.
Mr. McCann, is the, the aerial exhibit, uh, part of one of those slideshows?
Yes, that's the first part of the slideshow, yes.
Okay.
All right, so just, I guess, for me, uh, I see fourteen pages in the slideshow, is that correct? Just for my reference.
Um, Stuart, I'm going to defer to you, Mr. Johnson.
Correct, fourteen pages.
All right, thank you. All right, and I'll stay, I'll swear you in still. Uh, do you want any testimony you give tonight? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, uh, Stuart Johnson, S T U A R T, last name Johnson, J O H N S O N.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, good evening. Um, you were the original project architect here, correct?
I was, that's correct.
Okay, and, uh, your license is current tonight?
It is.
Okay, thank you, sir. You're qualified.
Well, great, uh, thanks and, uh, good evening, everyone, and we're pleased to, uh, be before everyone here. Um, so without further ado, I guess let me begin and pick up where, uh, Mr. McCann left off. Um, you know, as he noted, uh, my first slide of the fourteen-page exhibit here, uh, is a aerial site plan. It's dated February seventh, uh, two thousand twenty-three.
Uh, prepare by Colliers. To mark this as A two.
Okay, great. So exhibit A two and exhibit A two, for the record, I believe will be the fourteen-page, um, digital slideshow.
Correct.
Great, okay. Well, the first exhibit here or the first page of, of exhibit A two is a aerial site plan. It was prepared by Colliers. Um, uh, and it depicts the existing site. Uh, the subject parcel is approximately two point zero nine acres. It's located within the Water Street redevelopment plan area, as, uh, many people are aware. Uh, the yellow outline here represents the site boundaries. The site has frontage on Clark Avenue to the north, has frontage on Water Street to the west and Claremont Avenue here to the south. And Yale Avenue and Bennett Street extend through the site. There's also a new street called New Street, uh, which, which runs in the north-south axis, and we'll see that on the site plan in a minute. Um, as Mr. McCann, I noted, the applicant received prior, uh, preliminary site plan approval for a multi-phase development and final site plan approval for the first phase, but it was a multi-phase development totaling six hundred and twenty-one, um, apartment units approximately twenty-nine thousand eighty-six square feet of ground floor commercial space and three hundred and seventy-three structured parking spaces. So, uh, second page of the digital exhibit here, this is a proposed, uh, site plan depicting the proposed phase two. Um, the, uh, proposed phase two of the, of the, uh, development. This has the same date here, February seventh. Um, phase two is shown here, uh, to the north here is phase one. Uh, phase one is the Agnes Apartment Building, which is currently completed now. And the Agnes Apartment Building is a four and five-story apartment building, which totals, uh, two hundred and thirty-three, uh, residential apartment units and approximately eight thousand three hundred and forty-six square feet of ground floor commercial retail space. It has frontage on Clark Avenue to the north here and Yale Avenue to the south, which extends up to Clark Avenue. Uh, and to the south here, where the phase two building, uh, as Mr. McCann had noted, uh, currently is being used as an interim surface parking lot for phase one. Um, as shown here in the rendered, in, in, in the rendered site plan, uh, we see the proposed phase two building. Um, so as noted, uh, uh, preliminary final site plan pluses were previously received here for phase two, which was a six and seven-story mixed-use apartment building with a rooftop amenity structure which totaled, uh, three hundred and ten apartment units and approximately eleven thousand square feet of ground floor commercial retail space and three hundred and seventy-three structured parking spaces within a multi-level structured parking deck that was located internal to the building. Uh, the proposed phase two, um, the amended phase two design, which is currently being depicted here in the site plan, uh, proposes for a new six-story building with rooftop amenity structure and, uh, which, uh, totals three hundred and two apartment units, five thousand two hundred and ninety square feet of commercial retail space at the ground floor level and five hundred and seventy-seven structured parking spaces. So that re- uh, that represents a reduction of one less building story. Uh, there are approximately eight less apartment units, five thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven square feet less of commercial retail space at the ground floor and two hundred and four new structured parking spaces, uh, within that internal structured parking deck. The general shape and form of the building as, uh, what is being shown here, uh, substantially matches that of the prior approved scheme. Um, however, w- we have reduced the front yard setbacks at Yale Avenue, uh, New Street, Claremont and Water Street while still complying with the minimum setbacks. Um, it was noted by Mr. McCann that we are seeking a side yard variance. Um, the side yard here to the north, uh, the proposed footprint of the amended design does extend the building to the north here where we have a, a side yard setback of approximately point five feet, where five feet is required. Uh, this allows us to connect to the future phase three building. So in a minute, when I walk through the building plans, we'll see how we've designed, uh, the residential corridor to connect to the future phase three building. Um, that allows for residents of phase three to connect to phase uh, two to get access to parking and the residential amenities within that larger building. Um, it also allows for a new, uh, um, a covered and cantilevered plaza here, which provides for pedestrian connectivity between Yale Avenue and Water Street and a new dog running, uh, a, a new dog park and dog run area, which is an amenity for residents of this new community here at the base of the building. Um, and lastly, our engineer who's here this evening will speak about, uh, the sidewalks. Um, but, um, in the current concept, we do have eight-foot wide sidewalks. Uh, there is a requirement to provide a minimum sidewalk width of ten feet. Uh, we have met with, uh, the city engineering department, as Mr. Coakley will, uh, provide testimony here. Um, the applicant is agreeing to increase the sidewalk width, uh, to provide a minimum clear, uh, dimension of ten feet. Uh, in doing so, we would be reducing the parallel parking spaces from ten feet width to eight feet, which complies with RSI's standards. So with that, I'm going to advance to page three of the digital presentation. This is an architectural site plan. It depicts the ground floor of the building. Um, so the proposed design here, uh, provides for a new six-story mixed-use apartment building with a multi-level structured parking deck that's internal to the building. The parking deck here is being pocheted in the lighter gray color. This is a very similar design to the prior approved scheme. As could be sh- uh, um, you know, as could be seen or shown here, we are wrapping this parking deck on all four sides with residential apartment units and/or retail, uh, providing for active uses at the base of the building and the upper portions of the building. Uh, generally screening that parking from, uh, public view. Um, the main residential lobby entrance is off of Yale Avenue, which is similar to the prior concept. That main, uh, residential entry is here off of the secure key found vestibule access, which provides access to a open, uh, lobby area with co-working and touchdown space, as well as a small leasing and management office and mail and package and concierge services on the, on the, uh, ground floor level. There's also a dog wash here conveniently located adjacent to the outdoor covered dog run area, uh, for residents of this building. Um, the current concept of design does eliminate one of the curb cuts, which was previously, uh, proposed at Yale Avenue. So previously, the garage had two different curb cuts, one access point off of Yale and one access point off of Claremont Avenue. Uh, the current concept proposes to eliminate the curb cut off of Yale Avenue, which creates for a more pedestrian-friendly streetscape experience along that, uh, northern frontage here on Yale, on, uh, Yale Avenue, which connects to that, uh, covered cantilevered plaza, uh, providing the pedestrian access to Water Street. Um, while expanding, uh, the curb cut and the vehicular garage, um, entrance off of Claremont Street here to the south, um, which can be seen here, which provides access here to a new covered entry motor court, uh, which is a smart design here, which provides for drop-off and delivery. Um, for, for mail and arrival or Uber and Lyft type, uh, drop-off for residents of the community. It takes that use off of the street and out of the public right, uh, you know, I guess out of the public right-of-way and internal to the building here um, in a covered, uh, entry motor court that also provides access here to the ground level of the, uh, parking garage, which is a split-level garage design, uh, with ramps which provide access to the upper levels of the building. Um, we are providing here one, uh, one ingress lane and two egress lanes, uh, that exit the garage. There was a recommendation by planning and engineering that the northernmost, um, uh, the northernmost drive aisle here, which is a, uh, which is an exit or, uh, or, uh, an exit lane, I guess, out of the garage, um, that, that be striped and signed for building management use only. So that be restricted only for building management use, which the applicant, um, is agreeing to. So, uh, residents of the building and visitors of the building would only use the center lane. In the northern lane here, that garage would remain closed and we would stripe and sign that in such a way that that would only be for, uh, building maintenance and access use. Um, in the garage, we are also providing approximately, uh, one hundred and fifty-one secure bicycle parking spaces, which meets the requirement of point five parking, uh, or a point five bicycle parking spaces per residential apartment unit. Um, the concept was to spread those, uh, spaces throughout the garage and they would be conveniently located adjacent to the elevators. Uh, there was a recommendation in the planning report that we locate a minimum of sixty secure bicycle parking spaces at the base of the building on the ground floor, which the applicant is agreeing to do. Um, so as a condition of approval, what is being labeled as water meter room, uh, the domestic fire service sprinkler room here will be relocated to what is being labeled as maintenance. It will cr- you know, uh, create a secure bicycle storage room here on the ground floor of the building that provides for sixty bicycle parking spaces. Um, the retail being proposed here has been consolidated and, uh, primarily has frontage on Water Street, uh, turning the corner here slightly up to Claremont Avenue. Um, as can be shown here, it's approximately five thousand four hundred and forty square feet of commercial retail space. Uh, it is anticipated that it could be up to three retail tenants, which is being diagrammed here, uh, by these dashed, uh, uh, bay lines or demising walls. So we are showing multiple entrances there off of Water Street, uh, wh- where we would have entrance canopy and signage being proposed. So, wi- with that, I'm going to walk you through the upper floors of the building. Um, so my next slide here, this is the second floor of the building. Um, so we can see the garage, which is again being wrapped on all sides by residential apartment units, which are being, uh, pocheted here in the orange color. Um, above the ground floor of the building, we have a open-air courtyard, uh, which provides for passive recreation space for residents of the community. Um, the units that front on, on, on this courtyard level do have individual private terraces, which is a, uh, smart, uh, smart use and nice amenity. Um, and on the second floor level, we do have, uh, residential amenity space, uh, fitness area, uh, yoga, stretching, cardio-type, uh, uses. There's also an open stair here which provides There's also an open stair here, which provides convenient access to the ground floor of the building for residents. The upper floors of the building, we're now moving to, uh, the typical third through sixth floor plan of the building. Uh, we can see the open-air courtyard to the second floor below. Uh, this piece of the massing here drops away, so this is a three-story piece of massing, which allows for open air and light into this courtyard. So the prior scheme had a open-air courtyard that was on grade, but it was enclosed on all sides, which let less daylighting into that courtyard. So by expanding this leg of the building to the north, um, as can be seen here, the corridor extends, uh, where we can have a future door on hold open. Uh, providing access to the phase three building, but it also allows for daylighting and natural air into this courtyard, which is a smart design. I'll speak a minute here about, um, the, uh, revised unit mix. So we have three hundred and two residential apartment units in total, which is eight less apartment units than, uh, previously approved. We have a hundred and forty-five studio units. There are ninety-nine one-bedroom units. And fifty-eight two-bedroom apartment units that generally stack throughout the building for construction efficiency. Many of those studio units you'll see have an internal den or sleeping alcove, which really function as a one-bedroom, uh, unit and respond well to the market. Uh, then advancing the slide, this brings us to the roof plan. So as noted, uh, similar to the prior scheme, uh, we are proposing a rooftop amenity, um, indoor and outdoor amenity level. The rooftop structures and appurtenances, as well as the indoor amenity, uh, and the height of, of those structures and appurtenances. Uh, they all comply with section three hundred and forty-five sixty of the Jersey, uh, the Jersey City LDO. We are providing for approximately a thirty-eight hundred square foot indoor amenity space. Uh, conveniently accessed here off of the secure elevators. That would provide for an indoor lounge, dining and kitchen area, uh, men's and women's bathroom. And then provide access here to an outdoor, uh, pool deck with chaise lounge seating area. A synthetic turf area here with outdoor dining and cooking opportunities. And there's also a, a multi-sport, uh, surface or court area here of approximately forty-two hundred square feet. Um, all of this area is located on top of the structured parking garage. It's set back approximately thirty to thirty-six feet from the roof edge. It's really not visible, um, from the human scale. Uh, walking or driving around the building, provides for smart outdoor and indoor amenity space for residents of this phase and this building. But also phase one and the future phase three. So with that, I'm going to advance my next slide here and we're pleased to share the exterior architecture of the building. So, um, this is an illustrative perspective view. It's a view looking east from Water Street. As can be shown here, uh, the building provides for the reading of a six-story building. Uh, we cannot see here from the human scale, uh, the proposed rooftop amenity deck, which is set well back, uh, from this frontage. The building design has been provided to, uh, to provide for a clear base and top reading. The base of the building here, fronting on Water Street is where the proposed retail is being, uh, shown and proposed for the project. So we do have new architectural aluminum, uh, storefront windows, uh, in the large storefront windows that provide for an active use along that, uh, frontage. Um, we can see the various entrances into those future retail, uh, tenant spaces. As well as entry canopy signs, uh, that are located above those entry doors. Uh, the exterior building materials, uh, uh, that are being proposed here, uh, consist of a, a porcelain tile, uh, cladding system being used at the base of the building here. Uh, the upper portion of the building is a composite metal panel. It's a semi-custom, uh, sawtooth profile or, uh, saw reveal, uh, profile. Which is a very interesting, uh, aspect to the project and the design, but it's a very dynamic detail. And we'll see it again here in a minute. But the saw reveal is on an angle here, uh, with two different colors. So the primary face color is a white composite metal panel color. And the return color is a copper color with a satin finish. So it really makes for a dynamic experience, walking and driving around the building, uh, depending on your relative angle to the facade or to the project. Uh, really would be a dynamic experience as you, as you were to circulate or navigate around the building. Uh, you would experience the primary, uh, white face of, of this, uh, semi-custom, uh, saw profile panel. And here on the oblique angle, uh, we can see that copper color. Um, the upper floors of the building are residential apartment units. Uh, we have large punched openings here. The windows vary in width from approximately eight feet in width to twelve feet eight inches. So in some of these units, almost sort of wall-to-wall with windows, uh, which allow for large, you know, large windows, adequate light and air. Each of the residential apartment units would have a minimum ceiling height of approximately nine feet. Uh, this is all very similar to the prior concept. The units would be conditioned, heated and cooled with a through-all PTAC unit, which is concealed and screened here with a continuous louver panel. Uh, that's designed to be integrated into that, uh, window profile. Um, the windows on the upper floors of the building are an aluminum-clad, uh, wood window, which is very similar to the phase one Agnes apartment building. Um, we are also using, uh, three different, uh, thin brick veneers on the building. So there's a white thin brick veneer being used here on the corner, which, uh, which, uh, turns the corner on a ninety, uh, degree angle wrapping onto, uh, Yale Avenue. Um, we're also using a lighter blue, uh, glazed brick for accent on the base of the building here, um, at the human scale. In the upper cornice of the building, uh, we can see a copper, uh, composite metal panel profile. This is a ribbed, uh, profile. Uh, that's running in a horizontal dimension, which provides a cap or a hat for the building. Uh, we do have subtle relief and projection along these facades. And lastly, I'll just, uh, point out the, um. The cantilevered plaza that's being, uh, created here, um, on the ground floor. So we have a two and one-story, um. Projected and cantilevered, uh, plaza, which provides for pedestrian connectivity between Water Street and Yale Avenue. As well as a small outdoor dog run area that's covered with convenient access, um, internally to the ground floor of the building. So, advancing the slide, I, I just have our material lookbook. Um, so I'll just spend a few minutes, um, highlighting some of these materials that we just saw. Uh, but brick A here in the snowfall color, uh, was the thin brick veneer being used on the corner of the building on the upper portion, turning the corner onto Yale. Uh, brick two here, or brick B, material two, is a thin brick. It's a glazed brick. It's a Mazur color, light blue color. Um, and then the saw panel face, the composite metal panel, uh, this is the stone white color, which is the primary color. Uh, and then the return profile color is a copper color here, which matches the metal coping at the upper floor of the building. The next slide here, we can see that saw, uh, the saw panel return, uh, copper color. Uh, we're also using a infill accent composite metal panel of this charcoal gray, which we'll see in a minute. And an additional accent, uh, uh, thin brick, uh, material. Uh, as noted, the residential apartment units would be, uh, uh, a darker black aluminum wood clad window, similar to the Agnes apartment building in phase one. Uh, we had noted the, uh, continuous louver grill panel, uh, designed into those windows to conceal the PTAC units for heating and cooling of the residential apartment units. Um, we do have some composite metal railing being used on the upper rooftop deck of the building. And lastly, the aluminum storefront window system and doors that are being proposed at the base of the building at the residential lobby. Uh, the commercial retail space that fronts onto Water Street, um, and the amenity space for the building. So lastly, uh, we're pleased to share in, um, an additional western perspective view. This is a view looking south from Yale Avenue. This is a view standing, um, essentially at the corner of the Agnes apartment building at the commercial retail and fitness area of the Agnes apartment building. Looking at the primary residential entrance here for this new phase two building, uh, fronting on Yale Avenue. So we can see large, uh, storefront windows here that would be activated with internal lighting. That would be lit in the early evening hours. The second floor here is into some of that amenity space that was being shown on the second floor. Um, and that screens that open-air courtyard on the second level just beyond. Um, as can be shown here, the exterior building materials are very similar to that of what we saw on, on, um. The Water Street, uh, frontage and really wrapping on all four sides of the building. But we can see that saw, uh, saw panel, uh, profile being used on the upper, upper portions of the building. The white, uh, masonry brick veneer that turned the corner from Water Street to Yale Avenue and wraps into that courtyard. Uh, some of that darker charcoal composite panel being used for accent here on the far elevation within that courtyard. And that ribbed, uh, profile being used on the cornice of the building here for accent and providing a, uh, cap or top to that building. So with that, I'm going to spend a few minutes to talk about the signage being proposed here as part of phase two. Uh, we are proposing for and asking for eleven signs. That's thirteen less signs from what we, uh, previously got approved. In the preliminary phase two approvals, uh, specifically there are two residential signs. There's one residential sign at Yale Avenue. At the primary residential entrance, one on Claremont, uh, the secondary residential entrance, that's no change from what, uh, previously was approved. Uh, parking garage signs. We are proposing four signs, which is two additional signs from that which was previously approved. Uh, we have one sign on Yale Avenue, which is no, uh, change. Then three signs being proposed at Claremont Avenue, which is two additional from what was previously approved. These signs are really wayfinding signs, um, are in a really wayfinding in, uh, nature. But, um, but they are, uh, you know, dimensional channel cut letters that would indicate the, uh, parking garage entrances or, or exits. As well as the entrance, uh, the public entrance for residents of phase one and phase two. Or phase three, uh, if they were to access the garage off of Yale Avenue to the secure key fob vestibule at the ground level. In terms of commercial retail signs, we are proposing four signs, which is sixteen less than what we previously got approved. Um, we have zero signs at Yale Avenue versus eight previously. We have three signs at Water Street, which is five less than what we previously got approved. And one new sign at, uh, Claremont Avenue, which is three less than that, which we previously received approvals for. And lastly, in terms of signage, we are proposing a blade sign, a residential blade sign, uh, that was shown in the illustrative perspective rendering. As, as shown from, uh, Water Street, um, it is approximately fourteen and a half feet off of grade. It's approximately twenty-four feet in height with a three-foot projection. And again, that would be a, a blade sign. Um, so we are seeking approvals for that. Uh, that would indicate, uh, the name and the branding of the residential apartment building, um, and provide good visibility from the Water Street frontage. So with that, I believe that concludes my architectural testimony. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have, or Mr. McCann, you may have in terms of redirect.
I have no further questions of Mr. Johnson.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Um, Mr. Johnson, just thought, if you could entertain me for a minute. I, I didn't get the number on total bike parking spaces. I know you talked about moving sixty down to the ground floor, but what's the total number?
So the total bicycle parking is a hundred and fifty-one spaces.
Okay, and that's fifty percent. Uh, I'm sorry, uh.
Correct.
Half a bike per unit, so that just meets the.
Correct.
And you're proposing five hundred and seventy-seven parking spaces?
We are. So we're proposing five hundred and seventy-seven parking spaces. Those, those, uh, structured parking spaces are for all three phases of the project.
Okay, so how many total units in all three phases?
Uh, so we, we, uh, we received prior approvals for six hundred and twenty-one, uh, units.
Okay, so you're just under, uh, I, I'm, obviously I'm not good with math. If you saw my, counting on my fingers a couple of minutes ago, um. So we're under, you know, one spot per unit.
Correct.
Okay, the original approval was for three seventy-three just for this phase or total?
No, so, so the prior approval was three seventy-three for the project in total.
Okay, so we found two hundred parking spaces somewhere, correct?
We did. So, so the deck, um, go back to the ground floor of the building. Uh, the deck of the building elongated, um, so, so it, it, it grew, uh, in, in length. And again, we were able to yield additional parking spaces that way, which, uh, meets, uh, market demand here. Forecasted for phase three, but, uh, uh, sort of real-time market demand for phase one and phase two.
Okay, and there's no extra spaces in a surface lot at the end of phase three, correct?
Correct. So, um, as, as part of phase two, and I believe our engineer will speak to that, we are, and as Mr. T, uh, as, uh, Mr. McCann alluded to. We are seeking interim approval for a interim surface parking lot, which does include some valet parking spaces. And there would be a full-time valet parking attendant, uh, similar to the way that the current interim surface parking is functioning. Um, on the phase two lot today for phase one. But, um, when we come back to the board for final site plan approvals for phase three, there will be no surface parking proposed.
Understood. Okay, I just want to make sure there's no surface parking at the end of phase three that's being proposed tonight.
Not this evening.
Okay. All right, that's it for me. Anybody else from the board?
No. Okay, uh, my next witness is Mr. Jess Cokely from Colliers, uh, for some brief testimony on civil engineering, uh, aspects of the project.
Sure.
Hi Jesse, I'll just swear in, we can raise your right hand. Do you swear in this morning? Tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could, could you just state, tell me your name for me, please?
Sure. First name is Jesse, J E S S E. Last name is Cokely, C O K E L E Y.
Thank you.
Mr. Cokely, good evening. I believe we've qualified you in the past. Uh, your license is current tonight?
It is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Great, thank you. So I'm going to share my screen and, um, it's going to be what was slide three from Stewart's. Fourteen deck exhibit, so still the same exhibit. This is the phase two colored site plan rendering prepared by our office again dated February seventh. What I'm going to speak about is the parking. Um, I know chairman just had some questions on that as well. Um, and then I'm going to get into a separate exhibit, which he, which we can classify about the sidewalks. Why I mean that Stuart had alluded to our, our meeting with, um, city engineering as well, so. Obviously, phase, uh, one is complete with buildings one point one and one point two. As the parking that is located between Claremont Avenue and Yale Avenue today is going to be displaced. By the construction of the phase two building, the applicant is proposing a. Interim valet parking solution to make up for those, um, spaces that are being displaced for phase one. So that includes in the lots or the phase three area. As well as lots four and five, um, on Water Street would be able to accommodate one hundred and eighteen total spaces. With kind of a connection drive-through from Water Street to Yale, um, with the valet parking attendant being there for. For the residents within the building today. Once the building two is constructed. And the five hundred and seventy-seven parking spaces within the parking deck are open. And as Stuart alluded to, are being used by all of the residents for both phases. The valet parking area would be removed and there would be twenty-three at-grade spaces in a parking lot on the phase three lot. So that would be twenty-three spaces plus the five hundred and seventy-seven spaces in the parking deck. Which add in prior to phase three state would be six hundred total spaces, which. Does come out to be one point one-two spaces per unit, which does exceed the one point zero space per unit maximum. So that, that is one of the other variances that we are requesting tonight. At full build-out with phase three, those twenty-three spaces are not there. We default back to the five hundred and seventy-seven just within the parking deck. Then come below to point nine-four spaces per unit and would comply. But now that this interim condition would exist, um, you know, at phase two completion, that, that's where that variance, um, comes into play. The other thing not included in this is the twenty-three, uh, on-street parking spaces on Yale Avenue and New Street. Um, the parallel spaces, which. On the parallel spaces, which I'm going to bring up a a new exhibit here. I'm not sure what we're up to. I think the. The other one was A two, so this might be A three.
That's right.
Okay, great. So this is the layout plan for phase two point oh from. The plan set that was submitted dated. Last revised January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. But the one that was submitted was January ninth, twenty twenty-three. This update is really showing what we are. What Stuart initially mentioned earlier based on our meeting with engineering. Increasing the sidewalk widths to ten feet. Along the frontage of the building, along both Yale and New Street. And reducing the width of the parallel spaces down to eight feet. You know, at the recommendation and discussion with city engineering. So that's what this exhibit here shows. Kind of making up that extra two feet, which does comply with RSI standards as as Stuart mentioned. So that's really it from a from a parking standpoint in here. You can kind of see also on this. These two build out. These are the twenty-three parking spaces on phase three. That are there. That pretty, Stuart pretty much covered the other minor changes in the site plan in his testimony. So if you have any other questions, I'd be I'd be happy to answer them from a from a civil standpoint.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cokely. Counsel, any questions for your witness?
No, no, I think that was all we had from this witness.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I have no questions of Mr. Cokely. Anybody else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. So appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next witness is Mr. Ed Colling.
Hi Ed, how you doing?
Doing well, thank you.
Square in. Do you swear any testimony? Give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, can you state your name, please?
First name is Edward. The last name is spelled K O L L I N G. So Edward Colling.
Thank you.
Mr. Colling, good evening. Always a pleasure. Your license is current tonight?
Yes, sir. My license is current and active in New Jersey.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified again.
Ed, we have three deviations. Would you mind running through them for the board, please?
Yes, and and I'll try to keep it brief because the previous two witnesses, I think, covered the the essence of these variances very, very well. The first is the 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 parking variance, and it's not that we don't have enough parking. It's that we actually will exceed the the permitted number of spaces during the interim period of. Of phase two, while we wait for phase three to be constructed. In this case, we will have a total number of parking spaces of five hundred and seventy-seven in the structure. Twenty-three at grade for a total of six hundred parking spaces. But based on the unit count and the number of square feet that we have in commercial. We should only have. Five hundred and forty-nine parking spaces. So we have a a variance of fifty, fifty-one parking spaces there. Thereabouts. But again, as I mentioned, it's it's only temporary in nature. It exceeds the number by the permitted number by less than ten percent. So. In in the big picture, it really isn't significant. After phase three is constructed, we would have a permitted number of spaces, a maximum of six hundred and forty-two. The number of spaces on site would be reduced to five seventy-seven. The minimum is three oh seven. So we would fall well within the range. Where we would meet the the minimum, the minimum requirement, and we would be well below the maximum. Maximum permitted. And that's because there is a permitted amount for commercial space as well as the. Amount for the the dwelling units. So there's really no significant impacts here in terms of impact on the intent of the zone plan because. We would actually be within the the permitted number. At the end of phase three, and there's no significant impact on on the public, public good because we would be. At that, at all times, meeting the the minimum required. If you look at the benefits of this project, I mean, they're they're really substantial. It really hits all the. Goals and objectives of the redevelopment plan. The redevelopment plan is intended to be primarily redeveloped as a residential area, which this project does. Another intent is to allow for commercial development along Route four forty, or in this case, it's Water Street, which we are including commercial development in this project. This project was in, this development area was intended to provide for a transition from what were industrial uses there. There were. Fair number of, say, of trucking uses and other industrial uses there that have since been eliminated. And this project obviously was responsible in part for that, and therefore meets the intent of the plan in that way. And I think one of the really major impacts of this project has been the. To improve the functional and physical layout. In terms of improved traffic and pedestrian circulation, including the widening of Route four forty. And what this project has been able to accomplish is the extension of Bennett Street, the extension of of Yale Avenue. The new connector that was also developed between Claremont and Yale. So that we've been able to extend the grid into this area where it didn't exist before. And I'm I'm sure the board will recall from some future, from some previous approvals and discussions we've had before the board. That the improvements to Water Street, which will be accomplished as part of phase three. Are are really fit into that whole master plan goal and objective of turning Route four forty into a. A complete street, a boulevard, if you will, with local vocal streets along Water Street. The highway being separated. And so there's really substantial benefits to this project in general. So I think you can see how the benefits substantially outweigh any detriment. Another variance really related to parking as well is that we have risking for twenty-two foot wide. Isle width where twenty-four is required within within the plan. The twenty-two foot. Width, I think, is really more than adequate. It provides for eleven, two eleven-foot wide lanes, so traffic can travel easily in each direction. It allows adequate a space for circulation and adequate a space for maneuvering. And in fact, the the LDO, the Jersey City Land Development Ordinance. Only requires a twenty-two foot wide aisle if you have nine-foot wide parking spaces, which is what. We are providing. So I think that demonstrates that this width is is adequate and safe. Will not result in any substantial detriment to the public good. It's not a substantial detriment to the intent of the zone plan. And as I've described, the the benefits, they are substantial. And in this case as well, the benefits would substantially outweigh any detriment. Lastly, we have the side yard requirement that we were asking to have a deviation from. But that side yard is only impacting the third phase of this this very project. So there's really no impact whatsoever on any other properties. All the perimeter setbacks are met. We have, we are providing the ten-foot wide sidewalks. So there's no impact on adjoining properties or on or on the the public domain. So there's no substantial detriment in this case to the public good as well. And even though we are asking for the the setback deviation, it only occurs at the upper floors. So at the pedestrian level, the connectivity between the new Bennett Street, the new Yale Avenue. And Water Street, that pedestrian connection that will go back and forth between Water Street and those other streets will remain. So there's no, there's no impact whatsoever on that circulation pattern. So there's really no substantial detriment. To the intent of the zone plan or to the public good. And again, the the benefits, which I won't enumerate again. But they're they're clear and they do substantially outweigh any detriment. So I think in all three cases, these. These deviations as requested can be granted.
Thank you, Ed. No further, no further questions of Mr. Colling.
All right, thank you, counsel. I have no questions from Mr. Colling. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, is that your presentation?
Yes, just requesting amended preliminary and final site plan approval with the interim use parking for three years, Mr. Chairman.
Understood. Okay, thank you. So at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Anybody from public?
Seeing no one from the public wishing to speak, Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public session.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Public is closed. This is Liz. Liz, anything you want to add?
Having a little trouble hearing Liz, but I think she asked if we received her staff memo, and the answer is yes. I think we've already agreed, and I'll just cover engineering too. I think we've already agreed. To address comments in Liz's staff memo as well as certain comments. Required, which Liz required us to address in the engineering memo. So I think we've covered that.
Yes, thank you. Yeah. That that covers my testimony. Staff vote recommend approval.
Okay, thanks, Liz.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion at this time to approve case P two-two dash two-one-seven as presented to the board here tonight.
Okay, motion is made and seconded for approval.
Okay. Vice Chair, Dr. Gonzalez. Commissioner Lipsky.
Think it's great addition to the western side of town. I vote aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
So this is the benefit of voting last. I I. I I can't vote for this project. We've just. Approved another two hundred cars dumping out onto Route four forty every day. And. You know, I didn't see a single rendering that didn't have a car in it. I think that's contrary to our master plan. It's certainly contrary to Vision Zero this city. But we're only meeting the bare minimum of bike parking spaces. So I I have a problem with that. I know this vote's meaningless, but I hope this statement isn't meaningless. I I'm serious about our master plan and the Vision Zero plan, and I am going to vote a hard no on this.
Okay. Four in favor, one against. Motion carries with conditions.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
All right, let's move on.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we're going to move on to item thirteen as case P two-two dash zero five nine. But before we do that, Cam, I think. Given the nine forty-six time, I thought Gonzalez was going to drag this out for another fourteen minutes, but. This is, I think this is going to be our last application tonight. Okay, yeah, I'm I'm just looking to see if I've received any communication. But I'll I'll start promoting attorneys.
Can I go first since I'm already here?
Sure.
So. I have. Item number. Sixteen on the agenda, case P two-two dash zero seven seven.
Yes.
Imagine that's going to get, not going to get heard, so I consent to carry it to the next hearing with. Preservation of notice.
Okay, thank you, counsel. Cam, are we putting these items on this? I'm sorry, tonight's the. On the fourteenth or the twenty-first, okay?
Twenty-first.
Okay, so we're going to carry to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is March twenty-first. Thank you, counsel. We appreciate it.
I also have, Mr. Chairman, item twenty-four and twenty-five, P two-two dash two-two-one. P two-two dash two-two-two. I'll consent to carry those to the next regularly scheduled meeting with preservation of notice.
Okay, thank you, counsel. We appreciate that.
Good night, everybody.
Have a good night. Okay, I did receive an email from Mr. Harrington about. Agenda and item number seventeen, case P twenty-two dash zero six nine. That would be for two twenty-seven West Side Avenue. He's requested to carry to March twenty-first with preservation of notice. Okay, we appreciate that.
Here's Mr. Lean here.
Yeah, do we have Mr. Lean up and?
I am here, Chairman.
Counsel, good evening. I I'm going to try and. Beat you to this. Cam, I want to put five eleven Newark on our next meeting if it's possible. Okay, yeah, we can, they are up next on the queue, so that would make sense, yes. Yeah, I know. Counsel, I I feel your pain. I understand.
Chairman, I I understand you're here at every one of these meetings, just like I am, so. So yes, I I understand, of of course. I will agree to the adjournment, as I reiterated on the the record the last time. It's without waiving any statutory right to my client, so.
Agreed.
Based on the 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 agenda on the the fourteenth, I would really appreciate that. This isn't as a right project, and my my clients obviously have been waiting for it to be heard, so.
Agreed. I I know I've seen your. I've seen this address way too many times on my my agendas. So, Cam, if we could, let's get that first up on the fourteenth, all right?
Yes.
All right, thank you, counsel. I think we have one more for you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gemma for one seventy-six West Side Avenue.
Gotcha.
Yes, and we've been patient also on as a right. We'll agree to adjourn. I'd love to see if we can get on, since we are on next after the last one. We can on the first for the twenty-first?
Cam, can we make that happen? Uh, yes, as you are listed in the queue after five eleven, certainly, we will maintain the existing order. Okay, we're going to put that first on the twenty-first, Cam. Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Gemma, thank you. We appreciate it.
So Chairman, five eleven will be on the fourteenth?
Yes, I want five eleven on the fourteenth if we can.
And Chairman and counsel, I believe I do have a couple of other matters that are scheduled tonight. I'm agreeing to adjourn those as well. Those, I'm not raising the issue about the, we we will set to. To preserve the 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 time there, so we can just move those forward to the the twenty-first.
Okay, so we have case P two-two dash two oh one for one seventy-nine Academy. And P two-two dash two zero two for thirty-nine High Street, correct?
That's correct.
And I think that's. It for you, counsel?
That's all I have this evening.
Okay. Just for my own clarification, I think I may have muddled this a little bit. So Tom, five eleven Newark is going to the special meeting, right?
I I I believe that's what we proposed, and I I would request that, yes.
Okay, okay, good. Five eleven is carrying to March fourteenth with preservation notice, okay? Correct. And Cam, how about those other two? Yeah, I received an email from the attorney representing thirty-six Congress Street and. No, I'm I'm looking for a date for the. Tom Lee's other applications. Okay. We can. I know. Twenty-first. Okay, so.
And and we would consent to that.
All right, thank you, counsel. So P two-two dash two zero two. And P two-two dash two zero five are both being carried to the twenty-first with preservation of notice. Okay, Cam, I'm sorry I cut you off. That's all right. And we received communication from Frank. Guagliardi, thirty-six Congress Street, requesting to carry with preservation of notice. And that would be to the March twenty-first meeting. I'm sorry, just I actually read the. I'm sorry, just, I actually read the, um. I read those numbers wrong. I, I just read that number into the record. Um, so I actually said P two, two dash two, zero, five, I think, uh, thirty-six Congress Street. I don't know if I said thirty-six Congress Street. I don't know, I'm losing my mind here, guys. Um. All right, so we're doing P two, two dash two, zero, one, one seventy-nine Academy Street. That's carried to the twenty-first. Yeah, we're putting that first on. Twenty-first, yeah. Now, Mr. Gemma's application is first on the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that for preserving our purity.
We got you.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Lean's, uh, application on Academy Street is gonna be on the twenty-first. Mr. Lean's, uh. Application on High Street, thirty-nine High Street, P two, two dash two, zero, two. Is carried to the twenty-first. And, um, P two, two dash two, zero, five for thirty-six Congress Street. Is carried to the twenty-first, correct? Yes. Okay.
Thank you, Board, have a good evening.
Thank you, counsel, you too. Uh, Cam, I think that's it. That is, yes. All right. That was a lot. All right, so let's, uh, get back on track, uh, for P two, two dash zero, five, nine preliminary and final major site plan with C variances for one twenty Monticello Avenue.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chair and, uh, counsel and commissioners.
Counsel, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Cowdah of Schuman Hand Lamargulies. I'm appearing on behalf of one twenty Monticello LLC. Uh, for an application. For, uh, preliminary and final major site plan approval with, uh, one deviation. The property is one eighteen dash one twenty-four Monticello Avenue. Um, just before we get started, I'd like to confirm, uh, the board's jurisdiction with counsel because this is a notice hearing.
Thank you, counsel. I am in receipt of your affidavit publication proof of mail on for case P two, two dash zero, five, nine at one twenty Monticello Avenue. Uh, all does appear to be in order. We're gonna mark it as A one for the.
Thank you. Um, so this project is in the Jackson Hill redevelopment area and it straddles the historic neighborhood mixed use and the neighborhood mixed use zones. Uh, the applicant proposes a six-story mixed-use building. Contain forty-six residential units and two retail spaces on the ground floor. As well as a roof deck with a green roof and stormwater detention. Um. I just wanna make sure all of my, uh, witnesses are up, uh. First would be Richard Garber, Grow Architects. And we also have Mark Chisvet as a civil engineer and Catherine Gregory as our professional planner. Um, I'd like to introduce Richard Garber.
Hi, Rich, how you doing?
All right, how are you?
I'm doing all right. I swear in. You swear any testimony you give tonight's gonna be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could just state your name for the record, please.
It's Richard Garber, G A R B E R.
Thank you. Mr. Garber, good evening. Your license is current tonight?
It is current, Mr. Chairman, and I will, I will be.
We appreciate that. You're the only thing standing between me and my bedtime.
I'm gonna share my screen. Um, and, uh, go into presentation mode here and just make sure everyone can see the screen.
We can, and, uh, I, was this included with the packet? I'm not sure.
Uh, the PowerPoint was, uh, maybe we should just mark it. There's nothing new in the PowerPoint that's not in the drawings, but it's, um, you know, organized in a way to present it to the board, hopefully with some clarity.
Sure, if we could.
And just tell me the number of slides, Mr. Garber.
Number of slides is thirty-six.
Very good. You can submit that after the hearing and obviously whatever ones you don't show will be part of the package.
Sounds great. Sounds great. Okay, may I start?
Please, go ahead.
Great, so we're, uh, very happy to bring this project to the board. Uh, this project has been in our, uh, sort of orbit for, uh, almost four years now. Uh, started out as a smaller project, uh, one twenty to one twenty-four, and then through, uh, the pandemic, the owner was able to tie up, uh, lot one eighteen. Uh, which gives us a little bit of a larger site. Uh, there are no deviations, uh, with the exception of the roof of pertances, which we'll talk about. Straightforward project. Uh, this is in the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan. Uh, the address is one eighteen to one twenty-four Monticello. You see two axon metrics here. Uh, one of the interesting things about this project is, uh, while it is in Jackson Hill, it is split zoned, uh, in terms of the sub-districts in Jackson Hill. And what that means is that one of the lots, lot one twenty-four, which you see, uh, here, if you can see my mouse, I'm circling it, is actually a, uh, uh, a significantly historic structure. Uh, and therefore we have to maintain, uh, portions of it. And, uh, the rest of the lot is in just the neighborhood mixed-use district, which means we can demo, uh, the structures there. And, uh, maximize the envelope out as permitted to six stories. And I wanna, uh, just, uh, make a distinction, uh, just, uh, for clarity. Uh, when, uh, in Jackson Hill, the way the redevelopment plan is written, if, uh, there's a consolidation that is split zoned, meaning both historic neighborhood mixed-use and neighborhood mixed-use. The whole site area can be used to consider the maximum height of the building. However, there will be height constraints to the portions of the consolidated site that are in the historic portion, portion. And that's why we have, as you can see here graphically, a portion of the building that's three stories where the rest of it is six. We would be permitted, given the lot size, which I'll go into. Uh, for six stories, uh, with the exception of the historic area. Um, so, uh, these are the lots, uh, and as I said, there's, uh, uh, four addresses, uh, one is a double lot, so we have one eighteen. Uh, the lot that you see in the center is one twenty to one twenty-two, which is vacant, and then one twenty-four. Uh, this is, and as you can see in the zoning map in the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan. And here we've, we've, uh, we've, uh, circled it and you can see the red is the neighborhood mixed-use and the gray is the historic neighborhood mixed-use. Uh, so we are split zoned, which is why we have to maintain that structure. And then you see, um, some aerial footage here. Uh, you see we have, uh, two structures, one on each side of the site, one of them we have to maintain, one of them goes away, and then a parking lot that we are filling. Uh, and then you can see here, so the structure that is historic is in the right slide, this, uh, that, the, the structure that's closest to, to us, uh, which, with the white, uh, single story. Um, a second floor and then the kind of black, uh, storefront there. Uh, and you see that a little bit more clearly here as well. Um, we have looked into the tax card, we've, uh, we've, uh, uh, collaborated and communicated with, um, Ms. O'Neil. Uh, the historic preservation officer in this. You see the existing site plan here. We have an existing two-story frame dwelling at one twenty-four. Uh, which is the historic one and then a three-story brick-and-frame structure at one eighteen and then largely a vacant lot, um, uh, in the middle. Uh, and so this is just a kind of diagram of that existing elevation. Now, uh, this is a, um, a letter dated, uh, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three to Mr. Langston. I'm sure everyone has seen it, but this is from Maggie stating that. The one structure is historically significant and therefore we have to maintain it. Um, and, uh, we're, we're fine with that. We're fine with that. Uh, in terms of the zoning tabulation chart, no deviations. We are asking for a deviation for roof appearances. Now we're calcu- uh, as, as, um, the board knows, and I brought this up before. Roof appearances in the majority of redevelopment plans in town are at twenty percent, however, building code allows for thirty percent. And so, uh, we tend to notice for these things, uh, uh, just because we don't usually design, uh, the mechanical, uh, structures and so forth that would count in terms of roof coverage. Uh, we are at twenty-one percent here by our best guesstimate, so that trigger a deviation, however, not a significant one. Uh, and then you can see everything else is in line. I'm not gonna read, uh, the no deviations. You'll just see them in terms of the, um. Uh, the building design. So briefly, our total combined lot area is fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-one square feet, and you can see how the breakdown, um, in the, in the slide. We have, um, uh, primarily a mercantile, uh, retail as well as an R two residential use here. Uh, and we are in the neighborhood mixed-use, uh, zone, sub-district for two of the lots, lots five and six, and then the historic neighborhood mixed-use for lot seven. Which is the one twenty-four lot, as I suggested before. Our building height proposed is, um, six stories and sixty-five feet, which is permitted per the redevelopment plan, and it's three stories on historic lot seven. The way height is determined on historic structures is you can add to the structures, uh, uh, that are deemed historic. However, you can only add to the height of the buildings that exist on either side of it. Which means, uh, that we could, uh, basically add a story, uh, which is what we're doing here. We are proposing forty-six residential units here. Um, and it's, um, you know, somewhat integrated. This is primarily a studio product. Uh, twenty-nine studios, fifteen one bedrooms and two two bedrooms. We are proposing one affordable unit on the third floor. Uh, the way that the, um. The way that the redevelopment plan reads is that five percent of the units that are above floor five, I believe, uh, need to be, uh, uh, designated affordable. That would mean one, one unit for us. Um, an elevator is proposed, providing wheelchair accessibility to all residences. Um, the first floor is composed of two retail spaces that are split on either side of the lobby. You'll see that as well as some mem- uh, amenity, including, uh, a gym and multipurpose room. And then, um, we are anticipating some utility rooms and a transformer vault. There is bike storage provided for thirty bikes and there are two common roof decks proposed, and you can see that, uh, there. I wanna reiterate, no parking here. Curb cuts are not permitted on the Monticello corridor in Jackson Hill, so, uh, wasn't even considered, uh, in this plan. Um, now, in terms of the demolition site plan, you see what we're doing is we've highlighted in yellow the storefront. Of, uh, the historic structure. And what we've worked out with Ms. O'Neil is that we, uh, will maintain, um, a certain amount, that the entire storefront as well as a certain amount of the walls that project back into the building. Uh, the proposed building that can be reused, uh, and we feel that we can, um, you know, we can accommodate the significance of that storefront in doing so. Um, you see here our proposed site plan. We have a number of, um, key entry places, and I'll, I'll read them just from top to bottom. Uh, retail one, uh, which is one of the retail spaces at just over a thousand square feet, uh, and that is an, and is entered through the historic facade. We then have a transformer vault that we're anticipating here. Uh, we're just showing that now. Um, I can see it coming. Uh, so, um, uh, we're anticipating we have to do that, uh, as well as the residential entry to the lobby, uh, which is here, and then we have a larger retail space at about two thousand two hundred and twenty-four square feet. Uh, which is, which is located on the, on the lowest portion of the, uh, the building. You see the property line, you see the rear yard, uh, which is, um, uh, ample green space, uh, that will be used for. Um, uh, the residents, uh, and, uh, the residential use, and those are accessed, and I'll go into this in the plan, from the multipurpose and gym spaces, which are, um, amenity spaces. Uh, there's sight lighting, I'm gonna skip that one and just kinda keep going here. So the plans, uh, we have two retail spaces on the ground floor, as I said, we are anticipating a transformer vault, which is shown at the sizes of P S E and G spec. We have our residential lobby here. Uh, what you see in orange are the two stairwells and elevator, and then you see the bike storage, uh, as well as some service spaces. And then we have a large gym and multipurpose room that I said, uh, before, our, uh, access, uh, the rear yard as well. Uh, you see here the bike path and the trash removal path from the bike room and trash room respectively. Trash will be stored in the building with the exception of on collection days, at which point. Um, uh, a building, uh, service employee will, will bring, uh, the trash and recycling out for collection. Uh, in terms of our second floor, and I, it's important that the board sees this because you'll see the shift, uh, in the plan, uh, with, uh, the, uh, because of the historic structure, the, so the historic structure, we're just coding that facade in yellow. You can see it here. Our two stairwells and elevator in orange and then the accessible, um, uh, hallway that leads to the units. We won't go into the unit design so much. I, 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 I mentioned that it's primarily a studio, a product with, uh, one bedrooms and two two bedrooms. Uh, you can see that here, and then on the third floor, which is where we add to the historic structure, the one, uh, story that we're permitted to add, we actually set it back a little bit and then create some, um. Uh, some deck space there, and we've, uh, designated, uh, the affordable unit actually on the third floor there. Uh, and I'll just read to you, uh, from the redevelopment plan, developers of new construction with more than five stories in zone one and zone three shall dedicate five percent of all residential units constructed above the fifth floor. I mentioned that before, as affordable housing for a period of a minimum of thirty years from the issuance of the certificate of occupancy. Uh, there are fifteen total units on floors five and six, so one shall be dedicated as affordable, and we're showing, um, I think this is a fine location for it, but that is also subject to, um. I think speaking with, uh, Ms. Gozon's, uh, office. Um, on the fourth floor, you see that it's primarily that six-story mass that is, is now here, and you see the roof of the, um, uh, the portion that's in the historic area. And what we've done is we've, uh, created two, um, private roof decks that are accessed from the buildings on the edge here of the, of the, um, six-story mass. And then a common roof deck of about four hundred and sixty feet that is accessed directly off of the hallway, so we think that that works out quite well. There's also about a four hundred and fourteen square foot modular green roof at the edge of our building. Uh, and then that continues up, and so you see here on the fifth floor and the sixth floor, we're basically just, um, extending that up and the floor plates, um, generally, uh, uh, repeat. We do have a very large modular green roof that's going to be required for our stormwater. Mr. Chisvet is here to speak to that, should the board want to hear that. Uh, we are proposing another common roof deck of one thousand one hundred and fifty square feet on the roof deck. And then you see we're imagining a number of condensing units and other mechanical equipment that we're actually putting in the front of the building. The roof deck is in the rear of the building, uh, to keep noise off the street and so forth, and I think that was, uh, uh, one of the requi- one of the requests. Um, from Jackson Hill, we've met with the Jackson Hill Community Group twice on this project. And, uh, so you see here our calculation where we're getting to twenty-one percent, um, which is a flexible number. I'd like to tell the board, you know, we really don't get into the design of the mechanical. Uh, the mechanical system of the building until we get this entitlement, the, the resolution, uh, from the planning board, um, but we're anticipating that there will be a modest variance there. Uh, and I will reiterate that building code allows for up to thirty percent, and, uh, we will absolutely comply with building code, uh, in terms of this. Uh, we're really excited about the facade and you can see the materials here. Um, I, I, um, have really come to kind of note as, as you go down some of the, um, north-south corridors in the southern part of the city. There's this really great tan brick, uh, that, um, is reminiscent of the city's sort of industrial past. We are attempting to activate this building. With, um, a combination of tan brick, of dark gray brick, which is, uh, along the base of the building, as well as, um, some, uh, metal panel. Uh, that you see also that's kind of interspersed within here. Uh, you see the retail signage that we're showing, uh, as well as the transformer vault doors, which are painted black to try to go away. And then the building entry here, and it's a kind of, um, a fun proportion of the lights and darks that kind of come together, uh, in a sort of way. And then you see the white facade, which we are maintaining, uh, based on the nineteen thirty-eight tax map for the, um, the smaller structure at one twenty-four Monticello. Uh, that continues, uh, around the back. The back is not as, um. As articulate as, as the front, but I, I would like to, uh, let the board know that the developer, uh, is keen on making sure that, that, um, we're not, uh, cheaping out, so to speak, on the back, so there will be, um, brick on the rear. Uh, as opposed to a stucco product. We are using stucco on the sides of the building, uh, because we are fully anticipating that there will be other buildings adjacent to us at some point, uh, in the future. Uh, there are here, uh, just some facade elevation details showing, um, the signage, uh, required for retail as well as the building address. There may also be a, um, a building name. Uh, but all of the signage requirements, uh, are per redevelopment plan. There's no. Uh, but all of the signage requirements, uh, are per the redevelopment plan. There's no, um. No deviations requested here. And then there are, uh, some more here where you actually see, um, uh, some of the, um, the patios that are, that are, um, proposed. Um, on the, um, on the sides and rear of the building. And then, uh, in the lower corner here, you see that modular green roof detail that I think the board has seen before. We like using the, 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 this modular green roof detail on, um, many of our projects that we bring before the board. Building section showing the six stories. This will be six stories, probably constructed four over two wood over. Uh, two floors of non-combustible material, which will be concrete and metal stud. Uh, we're not there yet, but, um, the section is, um, is pretty close to where it will end up. Another section cut through the stairwells, the axonometric drawings that I shared before. And then, um, we're, uh, we've done some shadow studies. You can see here March twentieth, June twenty-first, September twenty-second and December twenty-first. Uh, December twenty-first, as the board knows, uh, is really the worst-case scenario because the sun is at the lowest angle of the sky. Uh, I'm happy to report because of the, uh, location in the street that most of the shadow casting that this building is doing. Because it is, um, even though it's a permitted height, it is a tall building at this point for the Monticello corridor. In to the rear yard and the, as opposed to, um, cast. On the street or other buildings, uh, which we think is really great. This is the street elevation. Um, and you are seeing here, uh, the, the, the permitted, uh, six stories. You also see that, uh, some of that tan is picked up and some of the other buildings on the block. These are some historic row houses that you see, um, uh, you, adjacent to us in the other direction. And then this is just a quick, uh, zoom in of, uh, of that street elevation, uh, there. And so I think I'll end by putting up the axonometric drawings and that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you, Rich. Um. Would the board like to hear from Mr. Chisbet as civil engineering or they have any questions?
Uh, let me open it up for questions for Mr. Garber real quick. Uh, anybody, any questions for Mr. Garber?
No.
Oh.
Okay. Um. I don't know what Mr. Chisvet's gonna add at this point. Um, does anybody need engineering comments? I, I think I say it every other week, but we appreciate Mr. Chisvet coming down. Um.
You guys got to let him speak at some point.
I, we, I think we did last meeting.
Can wait.
I, yeah, I think the only engineering aspect we'd be looking at is, is the modular roof, um, the, the modular green roof. So I, I think we're good. Um. But, you know, we'll reserve that right, uh, if we need to before the end of the hearing. So, uh, counsel, anything else?
Um, I, I believe Rich, uh, summed it up nicely. Um. Uh, we have, uh, Catherine Gregory, just to address, uh, the planning points.
Sure.
Hi Catherine, uh, do you want any testimony you get tonight? It's gonna be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, can you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, Catherine Gregory, G R E G O R Y. My business address is ninety-six Linwood Plaza, number three fifty in Fort Lee, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Ms. Gregory, good evening. Uh, we've qualified you numerous times. Always a pleasure. Uh, your license is current tonight?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. You're qualified.
Thank you.
All right. So Ms. Gregory, uh, you've reviewed the plans and. You've found that. There's no deviations except for with the rooftop coverage. Is that correct?
That is, that is correct. Um, in review of this application, um, I've completed the site visit. I've obviously reviewed the plans, um, both the engineering and the architecture that has been provided to the board. I've also reviewed the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan as well as the master plan for Jersey City in preparation for this application.
Excellent.
Um, and, and so just, just go for it. Um, so we're here tonight because we're seeking one deviation. Um, and that is, as Richard stated, uh, for the coverage on the roof for the appurtenances. Twenty percent is permitted. We are guessing, um, or asking for the variance for twenty-one percent. Um, and Richard told you earlier that there is a conflict with the building code, which does permit thirty percent. Um, I would advocate that the twenty-one percent does meet the intent of the ordinance. Um, I don't think that there's going to be a substantial difference between twenty and twenty-one percent coverage on the roof. Um. And so in terms of the actual criteria for the granting of a C variance, there's the two types, the C one and the C two. Not going to say that we have a hardship necessarily, although there is a conflict in the ordinance with the building code. Um, I do believe we promote the purposes of zoning. Um, first and foremost, uh, purpose E, which talks about promotion of the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations. That will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities and regions and preservation of the environment. Uh, with that said, we do meet all of the bulk regulations on the density, um, of their Jackson Hill redevelopment plan. So we do promote purpose E. We also promote purpose G, which talks about providing sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses, which does also include residential and retail. Um, and to that end, um, you may have heard me speak in the past about the fact that in two thousand nineteen, Freddie Mac actually did a study. Um, and the U S is actually, uh, short three-point-eight million housing units. Um, and that was basically because if you all recall, two thousand eight, we had our little mortgage crisis. And so people couldn't get financing and, and people were, uh, um. Uh, not in, in terms of not being able to get financing, we're also foreclosing under homes and nobody was building housing. So it wasn't keeping up the increase in the population. Uh, so we are providing, uh, well-needed housing, particularly, I mean. For the residents of Jersey City and any new residents of Jersey City. Uh, we also are promoting purpose I, which talks about promotion of a desirable visual environment. Um, this is always really easy for me. I mean, what, first, I'm going to say that we complete the streetscape. Uh, but every time I work with, uh, Richard Garber, um, I think that his designs are really impeccable. He really responds, I think, to the streetscapes and the neighborhoods that are located, um, within Jersey City. Uh, so he makes my job really easy. Um, in terms of the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan, uh, we also, I believe we promote the full purpose of the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan. Um, and that is to seek to revitalize this commercial corridor by leveraging the light rail station and the hub development parcels. As well as the corridor's central location in the southern half of the city. The plan preserves many unique and historic structures along the corridor, which we are doing. Um, and that establishes the mixed-use character and pedestrian orientation of this community. Where opportunities exist for infill development, the plan allows for graduated building height controls. That incentivize private consolidation of underutilized parcels. And permit additional housing and employment opportunity to help support the primarily walk-in businesses along Jersey City's longest commercial corridor. Um, to that end, I think we do all of that. Uh, we are obviously providing, um, employment opportunities as we have two retail spaces. We're providing more infill development as we do have a vacant lot. We're responding to the historic nature of the one property because we are in that split lot zone. Um, so with that end, I also believe there's no. Substantial detriment to the public good or substantial, uh, detriment to the impaired, uh, excuse me. Substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of your zone plan and your zoning ordinance. For the very reason that we meet the exact purpose of the Jackson Hill redevelopment plan. I hope that was short enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Counsel, any questions for your witness?
Um, that's all. Most of the board.
Okay. Um. Yeah, I have no questions for Mr. Gregory. Um. I, I think you're preaching to the choir on the, the need for housing. I think we're the one board in the state that's. Trying to take care of that shortage and we're doing it all by ourselves. So, uh.
Correct.
Yeah. I, I think if everybody got on board, we'd be in a better place. But, um, yeah, any questions for Ms. Gregory? Anybody?
No.
All right. Thank you. We appreciate it. Counsel, anything else?
Thank you.
Uh, no, I'd just like to say that this project does meet the need for housing. It does not provide parking because that wasn't the intent. Um, within the redevelopment plan of Jackson Hill, how there's no curb cuts permitted, but it does provide the bike parking and. The one deviation is. Kind of technical and she's had no effect on, on the surrounding. So.
Okay. Thank you, counsel. Uh, so at this time, let's open it up for public comment. If anybody's here from the public that wants to comment on this application, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hand. I see Gene Daly up already.
Hello, Grand Gene. You'll just confirm for us that you are under oath still?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Ms. Daly, hello again, and, uh, we have three minutes for you.
Uh, yes, thank you very much. Um. I think it's a bit of a misnomer. Uh, we do need housing. But we need opportunity for people to own homes. So I think it's a little off, off-putting to say that we need housing. We do need housing. We need to have home ownership. Because without home ownership. You don't have people who rent here get involved with the city government. They go, they don't get involved with the communities. I'm not saying. You're for everyone, but we need home ownership. So I just want to clarify that, at least from my point of view. Um, the question I do have is about the affordable housing. Uh, specifically because the Mount Laurel decision stated that there has to be a certain amount of, like. Low income. Medium income and then workforce housing. Yet the Jersey City I Z O does not seem to qual- or itemize these things. So. From what I see thus far, everyone's, you know, cheering about the, the work, the, the affordable housing. But typically it seems that developers are only going for the workforce housing. They're not going for the middle or low income or the super-low income. So my concern is basically is a planning board keeping track of these things. Um, and what type of affordable housing will be, um. In this particular, um. Applicants. Proposal, uh, and how long would it be for? Uh, thank you very much. I'm good. I'm good on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daly. Um. So this, this project isn't part of the I Z O. This affordable housing is part of the redevelopment plan. It's, uh, it's different from the I Z O. Um. I didn't, Cam, I don't know if you want to address the rest of it or, uh.
They, they enter into an agreement with the Affordable Housing Division of Affordable Housing on the specification of where that unit will be in the building. Beyond that, it, it, it has no. It, this is not I Z O. This is not Mount Laurel. This is not, this is completely different.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I appreciate the, the question. Um, you know, there, there's a lot of. A lot of cloudiness to affordable housing and, and what's required and what this board can mandate. Um, we certainly can't mandate that this building be condo units and, um. You know, while, while I agree, I think that the city needs more, uh, homeownership opportunities. Uh, we can't mandate that. I, I wish we could, but we can't.
Uh.
Chairman, I just want to add too. So, um.
Go ahead, Matt.
The administration of, of affordable housing is also guided by chapter one eighty-eight of the municipal code. It's not hidden. It's public, adopted legislation and law for the city. They, uh, we rely on the uniform housing and affordability controls. It's just a state law. Um, and, uh, if Ms. Daly has additional questions like that, uh, I'd be happy to guide her. Uh, to, um, the city employees that work in affordable housing, uh, to provide her with some more information.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. I appreciate that. All right, uh, we're still on public comment. Anybody else from the public? If you'd like to comment, please raise your hand. And once again, if you're calling in, please press star nine to raise your hands. Anybody else?
Close the public.
Second it. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Public is closed. Uh, Cam, do you have anything else you want to add?
Well, um. I, I do want to just reiterate, um, some of what was already said in the professional planner that was provided by the applicant here. Um, just echoing, uh, that they do meet the objectives and goals. And they actually meet every objective and goal of this redevelopment plan, um, which is a nice, uh, golden star. Um, I will go on the record though to add an eleventh condition, um, to the planning staff memo, which states specifically that. The Division of Affordable Housing, um. Approve of the unit in the building that is to be designated as the affordable unit, which goes unsaid really, um. Since this redevelopment plan, uh, contemplated the affordability component prior to the establishment of. The Division of Affordable Housing. Um, so now we have a division that dedicates all of their time to the specific, um. Amenities, um, and is that condition acceptable, Mr. Couda?
Uh, yes, it is. And we have been in discussion with Ms. Gossaw.
Super. Okay. That's what I thought. Um, and having that said, planning staff recommends approval.
Okay, thanks, Cam. And, uh, counsel, I do have one other thing. I, I, I'm sorry. It slipped my mind. I think it's, uh, part of the city ordinance. Um, but just that the affordable unit is built with the same materials and there's no differentiation between that and any of the other units in the building.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve case P two-two dash zero five nine as it was presented to our board tonight.
Second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded.
Vice Chair Dr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Torres.
Aye.
Chairman Langston.
Yeah, I think Ms. Gregory made the, uh, case for the, the variance. I think it's de minimis, but, um. You know, I think the case is definitely there and it meets the goals and objectives of the master plan. Uh, so with that, I'm going to vote aye.
Motion carries on in favor with conditions.
Thank you. Thank you very much and.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night. All right.
Good night.
To memorialization of resolutions, please.
Hey, Mr. Chair, I have seven. Just want to make sure that that's what it is. All right. So I make a motion to approve the following resolutions. The first one is the resolution of the City of Jersey City Planning Board. Case number is P two-two dash one seven six. The applicant is seventy-two dash seventy-six Vroom Street LLC. At address seventy-two dash seventy-six Vroom Street, Jersey City, New Jersey, block one-two-two oh three, lot fifty-seven. This was decided on Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, application for preliminary and final major site plan approval with a C, with C variances. Second resolution is the City of Jersey City Planning Board in the matter of eight sixty-six Newark Avenue. Application number on this is P two-two dash two zero six was decided on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. Application for administrative amendment to preliminary and final major site plan approval. Number three is.